All the to order the Caroline County Board of Supervisors meeting April thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-one. President is Mr. Clay Forehand from the Madison District, Mr. Jeff Black from Western Caroline, Mr. Jeff Sealy from Bowling Green, Mr. Floyd Thomas from Mattapanai, Mr. Nancy Long from Port Royal, and I'm Reggie Underwood, Chairman from Reedy Church District. At this time, can we all ride through the indication? Most gracious in Heavenly Father, once again, we come before you asking for your blessings, asking for your guidance tonight, Heavenly Father, as we discuss the business of the county. Well, Heavenly Father, when the world is filled with turmoil, give us peace, give us understanding. Heavenly Father, we continue to look to you for answers, and we will continue to do so. We give all blessings, all thanks in your precious name. Amen. Please join in the pledge, Reggie.
No, Mister Chairman.
Thank you. Mister Black, any opening board comment?
Yes, I have a few, Mister Chairman, thank you. I'd like to start off by saying, just reminding people, especially public and fellow board members, that the public hearing for the Aqua Virginia rate increase is Tuesday, the twentieth. So that is case PUE two thousand and twenty dash zero zero one zero six. I signed up to speak today at that meeting, and in the past, I know when we've had public meetings, they're still shut down because of COVID, so everything's virtual. In the past, we've had several supervisors show up and kind of explain what the impact is. It's again, another significant increase that they are calling for, which really negatively impacts the subdivision of Bridlewood and the heritage side of Lake Landor. So I would encourage any supervisor and anyone from the public who can get on to that meeting to discuss what exactly is going on, I would appreciate it, so that they can voice their concerns about that rate increase. Second thing is, a couple Saturdays ago, the Lake Landor Adopt a Highway program hit the Lady Smith Road again. This time, we actually had eighteen volunteers, and we were able to pick up trash from what is County Line Baptist Church area all the way to Route One, and that was in conjunction with the YMCA, and they did it from Route One to Interstate ninety-five. In total, between the two Adopt a Highway programs that day, we picked up forty-five bags of trash. And while we're proud of the people that were out there, the volunteers are out there, it's really disconcerting that we go out there and pick it up, and then it's looking horrible again a few days later. So, once again, I know we've been looking at different ways to tackle this issue, and we need to continue to wrap our heads around anything that we can do to help mitigate some of the way that our roads look, because it's pretty terrible. So that's all I have, Mister Chairman, thank you.
Thank you, Mister Black. Mister Sealy?
Thank you, Mister Chairman. I just have one, and I would like to have a moment of silence for Cindy Tigler, a longtime county employee that passed on Monday after a long illness. She was always, always very, very helpful and very pleasant to deal with. She will be sorely missed, and if we could just have a moment of silence in recognition of her contributions to the county and everybody's lives that she touched. Thank you, Mister Chairman.
Thank you, Mrs. Sealy. Mister Long?
I was going to also mention Cindy. I will tell you that of the four daughters in that family, I had the pleasure of knowing three of them, and they had a wonderful gift of smile. You never ran into any of them, the three that I knew, without a smile, and Cindy's smile was touching to all. So I just ask that you keep the family in your thoughts. I'm not worried about Cindy. I know she's with her sisters and that she had a faith that's going to take care of her life, that's going to give her many rewards, but do keep the family to leave. All their daughters, a total of four daughters, of three of which I knew, is a terrible burden. It is all, many of you are parents, you can understand that. So let's keep the parents and her two lovely daughters and our thoughts in our hearts this week in all ways. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Long. Mister Thomas?
Of course, I would first of all echo those sentiments, and we will truly miss Miss Tangle. I have a few, Mister Chairman. Last Thursday, I attended a state and local officials webinar for broadband, and we've got several ideas which we'll pass to broadband committee when we meet next week. For those who don't know, the FCC has a website for complaints, and the reason I send people to that website is because it affects the mapping that the FCC awards broadband grants based on. Those maps are basically created by the cellphone companies, which don't really represent where people have access to broadband. So if you could all go to the FCC, you can just Google FCC complaint, and the complaint would be no access to broadband. The more people we get to say that in Caroline, the better chance we'll have for a grant. I've actually posted that on my County Board of Supervisors Facebook page, if you need a quick link. So that's one thing we need to do, and I'm working on a meeting with the, or one of our cable providers to discuss additional expansion opportunities. Mister Sadler and I are trying to set that meeting up. And last, we all got word that the Department of Health is considering moving the site from the community center to the Virginia Raceway, which is on the Spotsylvania-Caroline border. I had a long talk with Ms. Allison Baumst John, who's going to be on, you know, to explain that. I think the reason she said is, we give seven hundred shots a day here, and their allocation is now close to fifteen hundred, so they wanted to find a site that was capable of doing that many shots. I still think we ought to have a site here, and I think that's one of the things she's going to address, is we'll have more focus sites in Caroline, but I'd like to have more focus sites and the community center. So she's going to explain that. If we could add her to presentations as part of the board agenda, I'd appreciate it.
We'll do that, Mister Thomas, under amendments.
Presentations.
Under amendments, when we get to that, okay? Okay, that's my comment.
Sure.
My opening board comment, I have just several. First of all, I want to thank Second Mount Zion Baptist Church for allowing us to do community vaccines two Saturdays ago. The second shot for most of those residents will be, people who came and got their shot will be their twenty-fourth, will be their second shot. Second, we had our heated budget meeting last night, and sometimes we do get a little heated in our budget meetings, but we certainly respect everyone. But I want to address a comment that I made about giving schools their money and getting out of the way. I had a conversation with Dr. Rollins Feld about us giving money, appropriating our monies to school, and she and I talked about making sure that we didn't govern or administer in the business of the county. If I get this wrong, Dr. Rollins, make sure that... So I also had a conversation with another board member who, he and I kind of bantered a lot, and we kind of used probably some inappropriate language, and he probably, just basically, his comment, to me, a school board member, yes, basically, his comment to me was that we should trust the schools to, once we give them the money, we should give them the money, get out of the way, and not treat them as if we have oversight. And he and I went back and forth as to a conversation about monies back and forth, and I made that comment to him. I don't have a problem with that. So last night, I made the comment, and some people said that it was a, I was being, I guess maybe overly something, but I was just speaking probably pretty adamantly that I don't have an issue, as I said last night, that once we appropriate funds to the sheriff's office or to any of the county entities of getting out of the way, it's up to you to manage those, and it's not up to us to govern any of those entities that we're not directly responsible for. So if that was taken in negative context, I'm not going to apologize for what I said. I'm just going to say right intention, wrong, maybe wrong dimension, but that's how it came across. Certainly, that was not the intent to be negative, just how I feel. We're just going to try to make sure that we all agree to disagree, and that we all continue to respect each other. There were some comments that, they said that we were, there was a comment about some negativity, and I'm hoping that our board, in terms of making comments regarding any school board member, any board member, we don't make disparaging remarks regarding any of us. We're here to do a job for the residents of the county, and that's our goal. So with that, that's my only comments, and now, Mister Thomas, I'll take amendments to the agenda.
Mister Chairman, I would like to make an amendment to presentations that we had the Virginia Department of Health, Rappahannock Area District, make a presentation. Allison, I believe, is on the Zoom link.
Any other amendments to the...
Chairman, I have two. The first one, I would like, if it's okay with the board, to strike for discussion tonight, amendment, our agenda item number nine, considering we don't really have any information on it yet. I'd like to see some staff information before we go ahead and have this discussion. So if that's okay with, until we get more information and hear from the attorney that we strike that from the agenda tonight.
Mister Black, I'd like to have the introductory conversation about this, as to, I don't think we should strike it, in my opinion. I wouldn't, I asked for it to be put on the agenda, because I want preliminary conversations to take place, so we can begin to prepare, not take a vote, but simply have a discussion about why I think it's important.
I guess my concern is, I'd like to have, before I even have a preliminary discussion, I'd like to see the facts of how other counties do what they do, and that's my concern.
Again, we're not going to do, we're not going to make any decision, we're just going to begin to have a conversation about this particular...
I understand, and I understand, but we will have a public conversation that may, to me, be better off for a time when we get more information from our attorneys and other counties.
I disagree. I think anytime we're discussing the issue, I think the public has a right to hear what...
Okay, I'll make the motion that we strike agenda item number nine.
There's a motion that we strike agenda item number nine. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second?
I would like to put a date, the next meeting, we're going to strike it, or postpone it.
Right now, they're just, if he wants to amend his motion to strike it until the next meeting, he can amend his motion to include that.
I'll amend the motion, so that we can bring it up at the next meeting with information.
Is that the twentieth meeting or the twenty-seventh? We have a meeting on the twentieth, we have a meeting on the twenty-seventh?
Let's give the staff till the twenty-seventh.
Will you amend your second, Mister?
Yes, sir.
Any discussion on the motion? So there's a motion that we strike item number nine off the agenda and revisit it on the April twenty-seventh meeting regarding the spring holiday for county employees. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Are those opposed? Nay. Let's do a roll call. Mister Forehand?
Aye.
Mister Black?
Aye.
Mister Sealy?
Aye.
Miss Long?
Aye.
Mister Thomas?
Thank you. Mister Chairman, I have another amendment to the agenda.
Yes, I have a second one. Mister Chairman, this one should be, I would like to add something to the agenda, probably dealing with Mister Fincham, but I request the board to add to the agenda, to refer the extension of the Highway Overlake Corlor District in Article fifteen of the Caroline County zoning ordinance between Route thirty-six, thirty-nine, to its current location, to the Spotsylvania County Line, to the Planning Commission. So the, basically, Hcod, I would like to be able to extend that and to, from its current location, all the way to the Spotsylvania County Line. This is in regards to solar.
Again, Mister Black, my concern is that I think we need time to take a look at this and discuss it.
That's, I'm perfectly willing to put it on agenda for another next meeting or whatever. I just want, I want us to bring this up before we take up the solar issue.
I don't think it's appropriate to discuss tonight, but I do think it's appropriate that you can make a motion, like we did the item number nine, to, or just come back and say you want it on the agenda, and Mister Colley, would you put it on the agenda at a later date if you wanted to do that, if you want to specify the twenty-seventh or the twelfth, whichever one you prefer?
Mister Fincham, if we could do it for next meeting, I just want to make sure we get that in.
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Which meeting? Do you want to do it in April?
Yes.
Okay.
Is that going to be the twentieth or the twenty-seventh?
Close to that, the twentieth.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right. We will then add that to the agenda on the twentieth. Those are your two issues. All right, thank you. Mister Thomas?
Mister Chairman, at Mister Colley's request, I believe he wanted to pull the closed meeting.
Perfect. Mister Thomas, you say that we're going to scratch the closed meeting?
Mister Colley, Mister Colley asked that we pull the closed meeting?
Both items?
Well, yes.
Mister Thomas has requested that we pull the closed meeting for tonight. So on the agenda, we will eliminate items number nine and the closed meeting from tonight's agenda. So if I could get a motion to do that?
And add the Health Department.
And add the Health Department, thank you. And add the Health Department under presentations. I'll take a motion for approval of the agenda as amended.
So movement, Chairman.
Second. Misses Long, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion stands as amended. You want her to go first, while she's on? First on the agenda, we'll have the Virginia Department of Health to discuss the changes in our vaccination site and now behind it, and the purpose and what the intent is. And with that, Mister Thomas, I will... Allison, can you hear, fine? We can't hear.
Me?
We...
Are you in me?
Yes, we could hear you. There's a little delay, but go, you know, go right ahead.
Okay. Okay. Now, and I can slow down. Good evening, everybody, and thank you for the opportunity to, I am Allison Baumst John. And I'm the Public Information Officer at the Rappahannock Area Health District. Big thank you to Mister Thomas for taking the opportunity to speak with me on Friday and offering this to the entire board tonight. I will start with an announcement from the Health District that we did have our new Health Director, Dr. Lubanga Obagian, yesterday, since he is still very much in orientation process. Here tonight, on behalf of the Health Department, be able to context, and I'm happy to answer questions, but I will begin by saying there may be some things that I need to take back to the team and to our new director. Just to provide some general vaccination numbers, as of today, eight thousand seven hundred and thirteen Caroline residents have at least one dose vaccine. That represents about thirty-seven percent of adults in Caroline County. We do know that this data is several days delayed, since December is actually. We are seeing increases in vaccination across the states and in the Rappahannock Area Health District. And our district is that we need to be able to expand clinics in order to get more vax out the door and into the arms of individuals. To backtrack a little bit, back in February, the Health Department made the decision, our single site at the Frederick, to be in each locality once per week, allocation of vaccine that was available at that time. At this point in time, substantially more vaccine, and now we are obligated five days a week to be in our Health District. Unfortunately, that we have been using cannot handle more than the current doses in a given day, and this includes the Caroline Community Center, where we've been hundred doses of vaccine. Due to this schedule, the Rappahannock Area Health District also has a very limited capacity to provide by any vaccination clinic days, and so that limits our ability to get to some of the most vulnerable communities. So what we have been seeking to do is to cut these five, three large weekly clinic sites through, where we have expanded capacity and can do additional through to put a vaccine against. Will open up our staff time on other days to do additional clinics that can kind of rotate throughout the Health District, and especially rural communities and more rural areas. So Dominion Raceway was selected as one of this on the Caroline County, you know, it is in Spotsylvania County. With the first week of this site, we would be able to serve about two thousand doses to the residents of Caroline and Spotsylvania Counties, and in the following, we hope to administer two thousand five hundred doses per day. This is from the seventeen hundred doses per day currently administered to two localities. So in the end, it will open up more vaccine appointments to... We do still plan to have a presence in Caroline County, holding clinics there on May seventeenth and June, and which can grow to sites that are, what we're identifying as a little bit of deserts for vaccine. So this is much like what we did for the clinic that was held at Second Mount Zion Church in Dawn on March twenty-seventh, and where we will be returning on April twenty-fourth to complete second doses. The Rappahannock Area Health District has really been working to expand the number of community providers administering the vaccine, and I think that this is important context as well. We're trying to make this a little bit more similar to how individuals receive, say, their flu shot, where you can go to a local pharmacy or to your primary care provider in order to receive that vaccine. So far, there are providers that have been brought on board and are able to administer vaccines in our locations per week. There is one pharmacy will begin receiving vaccine. We are working to bring on one additional pharmacy. So there will be sites within Caroline County to, that may be a little bit closer to where they live, or just a more comfortable setting. You know, people are receiving vaccines in a pharmacy other than a really large and pod vaccine clinic. So we've been closely monitoring the data to inform the locations of our vaccination efforts, but it comes down to a capacity issue, where we're trying to get the vaccine out to the community as quickly as we can, because we are still seeing a... I did speak with Dr. Obasanjo today, sorry that he was not able to be here. He is, the county closed resolution for now to allow for additional discussions. He will be released to schedule a meeting between himself and Mister Colley, members of the board as appropriate. Happy to answer additional questions on this process or nineteen vaccination in general.
I'll open up to, Miss Johns, I'll open up to the board, and let's see if they have any questions, okay? Any questions from Mister Thomas?
This Baumst John, again, thanks for being here, do appreciate that, and I appreciate the time you spent with me on the phone to explain it, and...
If there are any questions, able to hear anything.
Okay, can you hear me now? All right, just, yeah, that's Verizon, yeah, but that's probably what that is. Just to make sure, you said to me on the phone, and for all those that were listening, you kind of cut in and cut out, the Caroline Community Center did about seven hundred shots per day when it was here, and now you're moving to Dominion Raceway, so you can do fifteen hundred shots a day? And that's why you're doing that, or say two thousand shots a day?
We will start with two thousand doses a day, and it will be able to scale up to about two thousand five hundred...
Okay.
...doses per day.
Now, one question, and ironically, I went to see my private healthcare yesterday, and they're part of Mary Washington Hospital. They're giving the vaccine one day a week on Thursday, and I know that's separate from the Health Department. What I wanted to ask, is it possible that the Health Department could work with our urgent care facility and provide enough doses for them to do the same thing, which would be another site in Caroline? I haven't asked them yet, but I'm sure if I ask them, they'll say yes. I just need to ask you to get me some vaccines to give to them.
Sure, so we... If, and I apologize for the delay from a few seconds ago. We do have to allocate to urgent care sites if they are a CDC, at this time, it is my understanding that urgent cares in Caroline County are not, they are not able to deliver the vaccine.
Okay, I will...
But we are able to allocate if they become a provider.
Okay. I will double check with them, and I'm sure they'll do whatever we have to, to make sure we have another site that's fairly stable. So to those who don't know, Dr. Woodford's office in Bowling Green does provide shots, mostly for his patients, but he did say that they would do some more people if they had enough dosage, but it is by appointment, so I wanted to have something on the other side of the county if possible. So I will work with you directly, and I'll give you a call tomorrow, so we don't have this delay, okay?
Sounds great. Thank you.
Thank you, Miss John. Any questions by any members of the board?
I'm just curious where the other side of Bowling, where the other side of the county from Bowling Green would be. We have a CVS.
CVS, yeah, they have CVS on...
I don't, not, not here, I don't think.
Okay.
I know they are in other localities, but...
All right. I will, I will ask her about that CVS when I talk to her tomorrow, because I think it's important, even though we're moving...
I can provide a little bit of context on those pharmacies.
Sure. Go right ahead. Of course, you know, it's test my patience, but I don't have any.
Sorry, there is a pretty... It's the Walgreens that will begin receiving vaccines next week, and CVS we are stationed with to see if they are able to administer vaccines out of that.
Yeah, if they could, if I could, I mean, if they could do something on the CVS on the western part of the county, because you have major subdivisions there, Landor, Caroline, Pendleton, you know, Caroline Pine, I mean, yeah, so you have Campbell's Creek, so you have a lot of subdivisions on that side, so it would be nice if they could come over to CVS, too.
Wouldn't you like to touch base with CVS, or...
Yeah, I can call.
Okay.
Ma'am, have you, ma'am, have you been in contact with them at all?
Sure.
You've been in touch with CVS?
So the VDH Central Office, up... So the V D H Central Office, not with that specific CBS locations. CBS is through the federal, um. Pharmacy program, local providers are receiving vaccines directly through V D H. V S is receiving those through the. Federal pharmacy program. Which makes it a little bit.
Okay, I'll, I'll, I'll give her a call tomorrow, this is hard to understand.
Why don't we, why don't you and Mr. Black get together with CBS? And then. Thank you, Ms. John, and, uh, sorry for the, uh, connection, but hopefully. We got the gist of it and I'm sure there's going to be more communication. And we'll get back to you regarding what we can do to continue to have, uh, local vaccination locations in the county. So thank you.
Thank you.
That sounds great.
Next, next on the.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is an update from the Rappahannock Electric Co-op. Uh, the new CEO, uh, President and CEO is Mr. John Hua.
Hello, good evening, uh, Mr. Chairman, uh, Board members, uh, those in attendance this evening and those viewing online. I am John Hua, the President and CEO of Rappahannock Electric Co-op. And it's a delight to be with you here this evening. First, before I get started, let me just, uh, two, two notes. First of all, thank you for all of your service. I know it's a time of great challenge and great opportunity and thank you for all that you are doing to keep the community strong. Secondly, thank you for those, um, comments and the honorary moment for, uh, Cindy Tigner and family. I think most of you are probably aware that Todd, her husband, is a fantastic R E C employee, thirty two year employee. Built much of the system and caring for the membership and, um, our prayers go out to the entire Tigner family. So thank you for that moment earlier. Um, it, tonight, if I may, I'm just going to cover, um, as, um, uh, expeditiously as I can, uh, an update on the cooperative. I've got some slides that I think we're going to have up on the screen here in, um, in just a moment. And the next slide, please, if you will. And I wanted to just take a quick look, first of all, at the, um, at the highest level. Because I think it's always, um, enlightening from the electric cooperative to cooperative perspective. There are some nine hundred co-ops across the nation covering fifty six percent of the landmass. And providing service in eighty eight percent of all U.S. counties, at least some portion of those counties. So co-ops are very large at scale. Next slide, please. And today, Rappahannock, uh, your co-op is, um, it reached a hundred and seventy thousand services. Our phenomenal team of four hundred and thirty employees manages and maintains and operates over seventeen thousand miles of power lines. And we operate on about a four hundred and sixty million dollar annual revenue basis. Next slide, please. And so here in the county, um, just to kind of dive in a little bit further, we've got just under thirteen thousand meters and growing. About twenty five hundred miles of line and eighty of those employees, uh, live here in Caroline County and call this county home. So we're, we're thankful for that. Uh, some of our larger key accounts, of, of course, include for A P Hill, uh, the school board, Meadow Event Park and, and many others. And a growing list of, of others across, uh, the region here. Next slide, please. And so I wanted to, uh, just one of our first, um, one of our first, um, characteristics, if you will, of the co-op. And if we can get to that next slide, I think they're having a little bit of trouble getting the slides to advance here. But one of the first characteristics of the co-op is our, is our caring culture. And, um, R E C has a number of programs that are designed to take care of the membership and to work with the communities. Uh, on an annual basis, over three hundred thousand dollars is made available through member donations and employee contributions. Uh, for instance, today we have over twenty seven thousand R E C members that voluntarily round up their power bills every month. Uh, in our Power of Change Program to help, uh, fund community grants. And so we're constantly on the lookout for that. Um, traditionally, I think you're probably aware, we've done a lot of, uh, in-person events. We've done some virtually over the last year or so here. We're excited about a day when we can all, um, safely get back together and resume many of those events that have been, um, a strong R E C tradition. Uh, next slide, please. So our board members, um, we have a nine-member, uh, board of directors, uh, elected by the membership. This past year, last August, we had over twenty thousand R E C members that submitted proxies and participated in our democratic elections. And, um, our board members do a fantastic job of looking out for the co-op, of being good stewards of the co-op's resources. And managing all the challenges that, uh, R E C and our industry is facing. If you haven't had a chance, uh, back around late October, we updated our website and put in a new website with just a, really a lot more information. So if you have a chance, uh, visit us on the web at www.myrec.coop. We have a governance center there with, uh, a wealth of information about the co-op, uh, the issues that we're dealing with. And how the board and the, and the employee team are managing those. Uh, next slide, please. So, uh, just a couple of, um, key, uh, contacts, if we can get that slide up. But, um, Ms. Linda Gray is our, is the board member that represents, uh, this region of Caroline County. Uh, I believe most of you probably know Maxie Rozell. Maxie's our managing director that, um, heads up the operations at our Bowling Green, uh, regional office and facilities there. Uh, Whitney Watts, um, uh, my assistant, uh, actually is just, uh, maybe a mile down the road here, uh, on Main Street. And, um, several other, other key contacts. I think he's gonna try to get, get to those slides in a moment here, but, uh, wanted to make sure that you were aware of these team members. Ann Lewis, as you see on the slide there, is our Director of Member Services and Community Relations. I think many of you know Ann. Uh, on the bottom left, Casey Hollins heads up, uh, much of our community grants and sponsorships. So if you have county programs that you want us to be aware of, uh, that would be really important. Chris Seber manages our member services, uh, her team has done a fantastic job during the pandemic. I'll speak just a little bit more to that. And one of our latest additions to our team is, uh, Felicia Ainsa. Felicia is a newer addition, our Director of Economic Development. We wanted to make sure that we were positioned, we were well positioned to make sure that the counties and the R E C service territory, as they go, look for. Working with, um, new businesses and new opportunities, that we are playing our part and filling our role in making sure those are successful. Uh, next slide, please. So just regarding, uh, our current pandemic operations, it's been a, a, a long and challenging, uh, past twelve months. Our team has done really a great job. I'm very proud of our employees for the flexibility and the wisdom in modifying our operations. The membership have been, um, extremely flexible in working, uh, with the co-op on payment, uh, opportunities and arrangements. And just modifying the way that they've interacted with R E C. Two or three financial things that I'll mention. Uh, last summer, the co-op retired, uh, over thirteen million dollars in capital credits, uh, which was about two times our typical retirement. That was to help, uh, reduce, uh, some of those summertime power bills for households and businesses that were struggling during the pandemic. We also, uh, distributed four point eight million dollars in, um, CARES Act, uh, funds to members that had fallen behind on their power bills. And then January of this year, we actually had a rate reduction, uh, which helped us, uh, provide some rate relief, uh, to homes and businesses. During what is a, um, a difficult year and a recovery year for, for many. So I wanted to make sure that you knew that, um, through all of this, though, our team has continued to do a phenomenal job of taking care of the grid. Looking out for, uh, the safety and health of our employees and certainly the public. Uh, next slide. Thank you. Um, so just regarding, uh, other areas of, um, of interest, uh, in terms of responsiveness, uh, the co-op. Prides itself with our yellow truck service. I hope that that is, uh, the experience that, um, that each of you are, um, recognizing. Uh, we, we are investing extensively into the electric grid. The co-op is spending about seventy million dollars a year on capital investment to manage growth, aging infrastructure and other needs. And here in the county, we operate twelve substations and again, about twenty five hundred miles of, of power lines and infrastructure. Uh, next slide, please. So when problems do arise, again, I, uh, hope that you're, um, experiencing, uh, the, uh, the, the really strong response, uh, from us with respect to, uh, our team members. Uh, and our, uh, our trucks and, and rolling and our, our team members are just fantastic at, um, getting out in all kinds of conditions. And making sure that, uh, we're doing our part to get service going. It, it was a tough past year. This past winter, we had a couple of major ICE events that had, uh, very significant impacts, uh, for our service territory. In fact, a December event and a February event combined, um, uh, we experienced, um, uh, over twenty thousand, uh, power outages with those two events. Next slide, please. And so I think just to, to make sure that, uh, the, the board understands and recognizes the diversity of the territory that we serve. Uh, it's our objective to make sure that we meet the needs of a growing and diverse membership. And that includes a lot of unique needs across the service territory from high development growth to, uh, rural farmland, uh, to other, uh, special and key accounts. Uh, next slide, please. There's been a lot of, um, focus in the past years and especially this past year on energy supply. Uh, as we saw the, uh, wintertime storms, um, caused problems in certain areas of the, of the nation. We are very thankful to be a member owner of ODEC, Old Dominion Electric Co-op headquartered in Richmond. And ODEC operates, uh, an extremely diverse power supply that is optimized for, um, cost and predictability. And also sustainability. So our portfolio today of energy supply includes really every resource. Nuclear, coal, natural gas, wind, solar, and Rappahannock additionally has a hydroelectric allocation. So we have all the primary sources in our energy portfolio, which help us meet growth and meet reliability. And have a dependable, uh, safe resources. Next slide, please. Uh, now with that, a few quick, uh, industry trends, I'll just really mention two of these. Really distributed energy, we have a growing number of member owners of the co-op that have installed rooftop solar. For instance, we have over a thousand members today with rooftop systems that we are interconnecting. Uh, when those systems produce excess energy, we buy it back and redistribute it. When the system isn't producing energy, we're there with the grid to support their needs. Uh, so we're seeing, uh, trends grow there. The next trend that we really anticipate being a very significant wave and a great opportunity for us, uh, is that of electric vehicles. And the, whether it be the, uh, the, the, the truck traffic along before interstate corridors that we serve. Or the residences and the businesses that will be relying on fleets and, um, a growing number of E Vs. So we're positioning the co-op to be ready for that growth, um, to understand the reliability needs that go with that. Because a service interruption, uh, would in the future, uh, potentially disrupt transportation. So we're, uh, very keenly aware of that and making sure that we're planning for the future and staying ahead of those needs. And then I'll just lastly mention, we did install, um, the first electric co-op, large-scale battery project, uh, here in the Rappahannock Service Territory. Next slide, please. Regarding, uh, fiber and broadband, um, two or three things that are underway there. Uh, first of all, we do have, and the board had approved, uh, a couple of years ago, a large-scale fiber backbone. It's an eight hundred and twenty mile project, over thirty million dollars that traverses, uh, through the counties that we serve. That backbone is primarily to help the utility, uh, meet its needs for the future, but is also sized and available for other carriers and for other third parties to have access to it. Uh, secondly, we've recently had some announcements, uh, with Louisa in Goochland regarding R E C's ability to partner, uh, with Firefly. Particularly as an internet service provider to help make some services available in those areas. And I want you to know that we are interested in and engaged in conversations really throughout our service territory at this point. Uh, that includes, uh, organizations like Atlantic Broadband and others with respect to how R E C could help facilitate, uh, their, their role in providing fiber services, uh, to, uh, to homes and businesses. So, um, know that hopefully we'll have more to announce in terms of our role in supporting those, those companies. Next slide, please. And so, um, as we kind of start to close out here just a little bit, a couple of things, a few reminders. For, uh, members that, um, have not accessed the R E C Smart Hub, uh, consider doing so. A wealth of, uh, information and alerts and ability to track your energy consumption. Uh, members might consider going paperless or signing up for our outage text alerts. It's our goal to keep the lights on, but sometimes, uh, when problems do arise, we want to make sure we're keeping members, uh, informed well. And certainly, when you do have an issue with service at your home, please be sure to visit our outage center on the web. Next slide. And again, uh, great team members. I hope that, um, you will not hesitate to call on us, uh, for any of, of, of the needs here in the county and ability to help, uh, further the interest and improve, uh, quality of life, uh, as well. Next slide. And, uh, just, uh, from our member perspective, uh, we're, we're proud to say that, uh, R E C scored seventeenth in the nation, uh, amongst electric utilities. For twenty twenty residential J D power member satisfaction. So, uh, seventeenth in the nation out of over a hundred and fifty utilities. Uh, that was really a, a fantastic, uh, score for us and we're hoping to, uh, to grow our performance there. Uh, as I close on the last slide and we can go to the, to the last slide. Just, um, remind, uh, those that are, um, viewing, uh, online tonight or here in attendance. We have a phenomenal employee team. Couldn't be more proud of our team members and the support that they get from their families through all of the tough challenges and, and the, uh, the growth and the expansion and upkeep of, of the grid. Uh, but I want to mention that, uh, nearly twenty percent of those employees are retirement eligible in about a five-year wave here that we've just entered into. We are seeing a lot of retirements. R E C is a fantastic home for, um, for, for future employees. So please help us get the word out and, um, if you know individuals in the community that might be interested in a career at R E C, please put them in touch with us. Uh, we, we'd really like to help, uh, work with them and we've got a lot of big shoes to fill over the years. So with that, Mr. Chairman, Board members, thank you for the, for your time and I'm ready to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, Mr. Hua. Um, I'll open the, uh, up for questions. Mr. Forehand, you have any questions or comments for?
No, I was just, actually, I was very happy to see the, the broadband, uh, work. The articles that, that I've read haven't been as optimistic as what your slide was up there. And I'd, uh, having family in. The Prince George Co-op area and have their very role and they now have internet service. Um, I was hopeful. And optimistic that you guys would be able to follow suit and, um, I'm glad to see that that's actually what's, what's happening, so.
Yes, sir, thank you. We are, we are starting to make some progress and we are, um, we, we've actually hired a Director of Fiber and Broadband Services, uh, Mark Ponton. And Mark is heading up, uh, really our efforts here and making sure that we're engaged with really a number of providers, uh, in multiple counties at this point. We believe that we can leverage the co-op's lines and infrastructure, towers and other infrastructure to, to make a big difference here and actually help speed the projects up.
You physically connect every home in this county already.
Absolutely.
It does make a tremendous amount of, uh, sense in my mind that, uh, you'd be a, a, a key component in this. Missing link, for lack of better words.
Absolutely.
Get that out there, so thank you.
Thank you, we're excited about the role.
Thank you, Mr. Forehand, Mr. Black.
Yeah, I'd like to, um, just kind of piggyback on what Mr. Forehand said. I think it's, it's key. I mean, one of the biggest issues that we face from constituents, um, in the rural areas of our, of, of our districts is lack of internet service. And I know Mr. Thomas and so forth, there, there's an internet committee that's working on that. But, I mean, we need to be able to tackle this from multiple different approaches. And I think you guys would be absolutely key in doing that. And anytime we go to major conferences with other supervisors, um, it's the co-op down in Prince George's County is always showing off what they've already done. So we're a little bit behind them. So it would be nice if we could play a little catch-up and, and see what we could do to help, um, some of the citizens. I know you have a larger geographic area to cover. I think you've covered twenty-two counties, you said.
Right.
Where's there a smaller geographic area? And so you have less, they have less challenges than you would, but, um, anything that you can do, because that's a, that's a huge issue for, uh, constituents. They want to know when, when they're getting, I mean, just this year, because the pandemic, it really, it really became, it was highlighted this year with that.
The second thing I would like to say is, um, I do want to congratulate you guys on, um, when we had the two major ICE events this year. Um, there was a lot of tree limbs down, for example, in my subdivision and, um, anything, it wasn't very long that I saw that you guys were out there and, and fixing those. So, um, that is really, really helpful. So we, we, we do, we do appreciate that. I don't think there was many people out for very long during, um, during those events. And if you saw some of the streets where some of the trees were down, it was, it, it was, uh, quite unbelievable that you guys were able to keep the power on. So thank you.
The last thing is, um, I actually had a question and this was just a little bit of a frustration for me. And I don't know, um, if this is, um, I actually was trying to contact the rep for Caroline County earlier this year. And I wanted a telephone conversation with her and, um, online, it just says email the whole board. And I didn't really want to email the whole board. And I didn't really want to email the whole board. I wanted to be able to say, what is, I mean, where's Ms. Gray's phone number? You know, how can I contact her? What's her particular email address? And it just says, "Email the whole board." And I don't know if that's something, I don't know why that is, but I just think, like, especially for us on the board of supervisors, we need to contact her and talk to her about something individually. It would be nice to be able to just look that up online and be able to have that information right there. I don't need to talk to the whole board. I just want to talk to my member.
Absolutely, well heard. And one of the things that we'll leave, I'll work with Ann Lewis to get a digital fact sheet to the board of supervisors and to the county team, and we'll make sure that we have those email addresses on there so that you can get directly in hold of Ms. Gray or others.
Okay, thank you.
And thank you for the compliment as well regarding the outages and certainly the reinforcement of the fiber.
And if we could, if it's up to the board members, I understand, but if we could get the phone numbers as well, because a lot of times I like to have a phone conversation with someone as opposed to, as opposed to the email.
Absolutely.
Right, thank you.
Certainly, we'll make that happen.
Mr. Sealy?
Thank you for coming this evening, and I've known the past presidents over the years from multiple events in the community. So I hope once the pandemic gets over, you get the opportunity to endure the roots in Fish Fry and the county fair and all the things that take place that the co-op does support in many, many, many ways that people don't always see from behind the scenes. But my only question is, what can the county, what can we as the board do to support you with fiber in Caroline? I know that there are opportunities that we have to be able to help, and it's always difficult to put our finger on who it is we need to talk to, but can you tell us as a board what we can do to help Rapid Hanuk Co-op bring fiber to as many folks that are subscribers to power that you have?
Absolutely, and thank you. First of all, we'll really look forward to getting out to many of the events once it's safe for all of us to do so and those events resume in the future. But with respect to fiber, when REC looks at the totality of its service territory, and we do have a very large, diverse territory, a full-scale fiber deployment for us system-wide is in excess of $600 million. That is a daunting scale in terms of being able to contemplate, and while we're a billion-dollar asset company, that is a massive undertaking. When we start to look at it on a county-specific level, the projects get, they're still very, very large, they're still, you know, tens of millions if not larger, but they become workable. I would encourage the county to look at anything that it could do to help appropriate any type of funding support. If you look at where we are in Louisa County, for instance, the county has appropriated some dollars. We're working with Firefly, which is out of Central Virginia Electric Co-op. They already have an internet service provider, and REC is going to actually own the fiber network. So we're bringing the capital to the table and making sure that our poles and infrastructure is ready for the install by doing make-ready. I mentioned that we're having conversations with other providers. That includes Atlantic Broadband and, you know, all points, there are several throughout the total territory. We would welcome an opportunity to visit with the board further or with county staff to talk about how REC could support service providers that may already be active and have a good, solid footprint. We don't want to reinvent anything that doesn't need to be reinvented, so if there's a way that we could help make fiber available, make access to our poles available, conduct system make-ready so that it's done timely, and even in the case of our work with Firefly, you know, potentially own and lease the fiber system to a third party.
So would you own it or lease it, or, I mean, are you willing to go into a partnership where if something exists, you would piggyback that? Because there are some places, I think, in the county that that actually exists.
Yeah, we're certainly willing to have an ownership lease stake or provide other support services, even access to our facilities as needed. So I think there's a lot of different ways to look at this, but that's how we see this process moving forward. But if the county can do anything to appropriate any dollars, and I know that there are a lot of demands and resource limitations, but if there's anything that could be done, it's possible that some of the infrastructure bills that are being discussed and that may come available at a locality level, it's possible that some of those dollars could more easily be transitioned into that broadband world. So we want to make sure that regardless of who that service provider is, with our rights of way and our infrastructure, we want to make sure that we're bringing what we can bring to help facilitate these projects.
Okay, well, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sealy. Mrs. Long?
About the daycare infrastructure?
I have no questions. Thank you so much.
Yes, Mr. Hua, thank you again for being here. I believe the co-op is the largest private sector employer in the county, so we thank you for that. And I know you've got a great staff here in the local office. They've done, you know, a wonderful job. I've got quite a few friends there. I had an uncle who I believe started in the 60s at the co-op, so.
Fantastic.
It's a very, very long history, and Mr. Rozell and I have kind of a spiritual relationship. We were on a flight from Chicago to Richmond that almost didn't make it.
Wow.
So we have a very spiritual relationship.
I understand.
And Maxi has done a great job. He's really helped the county a lot, so I do appreciate that. I'm not going to dwell on the fun project, but we are trying to meet with Mr. C. and Mr. Ponton?
Yes.
The new fiber director?
Yes.
So anything you can do to help facilitate that meeting. David Sadler and I, Floyd Thomas, have sent an email request for that meeting, so if you could help us get that meeting, and the meeting is with Atlantic Broadband too, so we're trying to bring, you know, as many people to the table as possible to expand wherever we can.
Fantastic. We very much look forward to that meeting, and we'll make sure that it's timely and prioritized.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Hua, thank you for coming. I do want to echo Mr. Thomas's sentiment. You have outstanding staff here, and I was, I didn't know that Mr. Black was having issue contacting Ms. Gray. I see her quite often in the community, as well as Mr. Rozell, so I can give her your information and have her contact. But again, I think the service is excellent. You guys continually get out there and make things happen for the community and for our citizens in their times of stress, and I just think that's important. Again, outstanding job. We certainly salute you, and we look forward to continue to working with Rapid Hanuk Electric.
Well, thank you so much, and all the credit goes to our employee team and, quite honestly, the support of their families, because when they respond, it's very timely and it's very rarely that it's convenient. It's usually in the middle of the night in the toughest of circumstances, the hottest of days and the coldest of days, and so our team does a remarkable job with this, and I'll be sure and pass along your comments. Thank you so much.
Thank you, sir.
Y'all be safe.
You too. Next on the agenda, we have the consent agenda. Are there any items on the, excuse me, I'm sorry. I can't leave Fran out. Our third, our third presentation tonight is from Ms. Fran Whitaker from the Caroline County Agricultural Fair. Fran, I am sorry. I know.
Okay, as all of you know, I'm Fran Whitaker, president of the Caroline County Agricultural Fair Association here since 2009, and I have good news to share with you. We are going to have a fair in 2021, June 23rd through 26th, and we are very excited. When the executive orders changed back in March, we decided we would, could we pull this off? You know, we plan our fair, it takes a year to plan it. This leaves us three months to plan it, but we decided we could, and we're going to have a Back to the Basics Caroline County Ag Fair. Along with that, we decided to have free admission for all, to give back to the citizens of the county. Also, we're going to use local artists and artisans. What that means is our music will be local bands and things, and try to help them because they also suffered during this past year, with the exception of our Wednesday night, which will be the U.S. Navy band Country Currents coming from Washington, D.C., and that will be free to us, and they perform all around the world, so that's very exciting, and that will be a way we can kick off our fair week with a salute to the military. So that'll be very exciting. We also are excited because we already have gotten some sponsors money coming in. Our loyal sponsors and you, the board of supervisors, are our biggest sponsor, and we appreciate what you did for us in 2020 that enabled us to take care of those obligations that we had. As you know, we had commitments that were made because we were planning the fair, but then, of course, it got shut down, so we appreciate that, and we certainly know you're going to be our biggest sponsor in 2021 as well. So I'm here tonight to say thank you for that as well. Don't have a fancy PowerPoint this year because we didn't do a whole lots of grand and glorious things, but we're getting started up again, and we appreciate the support of Caroline County. Now, of course, because we have, are doing this, we have been putting the pedal to the metal since March. I have two of my fair members here, Ms. Tate, who does publicity, and Ms. Williams, who does home goods, and they've come tonight to support me in being here, so I want them to stand up because they deserve a lot of credit because we've been doing a lot of work in the past few weeks. So again, thank you. I hope to see all of you June 23rd through 26th, Caroline County Ag Fairgrounds, and please, I hope you will try to be there at least on Wednesday night when we kick off with that nice band that's coming down for us. It's totally free and free is good. Again, thank you. Do you have any questions for me or anything?
Fran, I'm going to open it up for the board.
Okay.
If you have a question, then I'll save my comments. I'll start at the left end. Mr. Thomas, you have any comments for Ms. Whitaker?
No, just again, thanks to Mr. and Mrs. Tate for giving you the land. I promised them I would say thank you every time you came in, and they're gone now, but Linda knows I'm sticking to my word and always saying thank you. So do appreciate that, look forward to seeing you.
Okay, we'll be back to the basics. We're going to have farm animals, county fair food, midway, home goods, heritage, antique tractors, and music. So please come. We hope people will come and to just if nothing else, to sit around and see people and talk to people they haven't seen for a very long time. Any other questions?
Thank you, Mrs. Long. Mr. Sealy?
I just want to thank the fair for taking the big step of coming back to life this year. I know it's going to be difficult with such a short timeframe, but I think that anything you can do to get folks out, I think they'll be very appreciative because everybody's been home a long time. But thanks to the whole fair committee for what you all are doing, stepping up.
Thank you.
Mr. Black? Mr. Forehand?
Just looking forward to it.
Thank you. Look forward to seeing you. Thank you very much.
My comment, Ms. Whitaker, is that you really keep the spirit of rural community alive.
We try to.
And I think it's important that we continue to support and do all we can to ensure that this really becomes a staple of the county, so people can really see that country living ain't bad.
It certainly is. Well, thank you very much, and I'll see all of you in June.
All right, take care.
Thank you.
So that closes our presentations. Now we move to the consent agenda. Is, are there any items on the consent agenda anyone would like to discuss or remove? Hearing none, I'll take a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
That's you, Mr. Black? So there's a motion to approve the consent agenda by Mr. Black, second by Mrs. Long. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We will approve the consent agenda. We cannot do public comment till 7:30, so we'll take a couple of items, and we'll take a real-time break at 7:15, but can we do the?
Number eight, it's easy.
Mr. Chairman, in light of the Health Department discussion earlier this evening, we may, I mean, we can do a resolution, but I think they've explained, but it's the board's call.
Yeah. There have been some changes regarding moving to the raceway, and we were supposed to give our last shot this coming Monday, but I believe it's been extended now. Is that correct?
Yeah, and she alluded to a little bit of that.
Yeah, I couldn't hear her, that's why I wanted to kind of.
Exactly. There's two other dates. One is, I believe, May 17th, and the other one is June, don't quote me, maybe 24th. And the issue with those dates is the Dominion Raceway was occupied, so they won't have that shot there. They'll come back to Caroline for that.
So there will be, there will be local vaccination sites. One of the things about moving to the raceway, again, that gives us some opportunities to do some local vaccination locations in the county, as well as, since they have already activities at the raceway, we'll come back to the county for those two dates. So that will give us an opportunity to hopefully pick up some of our residents who were not able to get up to the raceway, or perhaps make it easier for our residents to move back and forth. Mr. Tom?
Chief, before you go, and I didn't get a chance to ask the Health Department because I really couldn't stand that delay. The recent decision by CDC to halt the Johnson &amp; Johnson vaccine, that was a one-shot one, and I know here in Caroline, they had been giving the Moderna vaccine, but the Health Department had us set up last week in Fredericksburg at the expo where they were giving Johnson &amp; Johnson, and they were supposed to give Johnson &amp; Johnson Saturday at Germanna and King George. Have those been canceled?
I can't answer for the King George, but there will be no more for us on the schedule.
No more Johnson &amp; Johnson?
Correct. That's, Dr. Avula put that press release out today, so until the federal government determines what problems, looks at those patients that they had issues with, and resumes the shipping and resumes the injection.
Okay, so it's a total freeze on that until then? Okay.
In the Commonwealth, yes, sir.
Right, well, I think it's nationwide.
Yeah.
All right, is it possible that when that release comes, or if it comes, you could let the board know?
Absolutely.
All right, appreciate it.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Chief Lauters. We will go ahead and discuss item, no, item number 10. No, we're not going to do it. We're just going to, we just did eight, basically. And I don't think it's necessary. I think if the board were concurred, now that we understand the rationale behind the change in site, I don't think it's necessary to send a resolution and just continue to work with Virginia Department of Health if. So I think we could get a motion to. Yeah, we're against moving, but it does give us other opportunities to do things locally. I think that's the, that's the plus of it, because while they're doing the major in Spotsylvania, we still have some say about local vaccination. If you have one, maybe you need one, like I said, in Ladysmith, we can talk about that. We need one in Fort Royal, we can talk about that, you know, so give us an opportunity.
The real issue is not anything the county did.
Right.
It's they don't have enough people to give shots.
Right.
That's really the problem. If they had more people to give shots, they could be here and somewhere else.
Right.
But they've only got a certain number of staff, so I guess we don't need to say that they don't have a certain number of staff, so that's fine.
Well, they did a great job at Second Baptist with the drive-through.
How many shots they did?
We did 192. That's all the vaccine they brought was 192.
200.
So we used, yeah, 200, we used every vial.
Okay.
All right, if the board will allow, we'll go on to agenda item number 10, which is a request for approval for a festival, Frederick and Callie Sullivan. Mr. Fincham?
Mr. Chairman, members of board, you have in your package tonight a request for a festival permit from Mr. and Ms. Callie and Frederick Sullivan. Their property is 3223 Ladysmith Road in the thriving village of Childsburg. If the board will recall, you approved a special exception permit for a special events facility a little over a year ago, I believe, and they're requesting the use of that facility for three music events at the dates and times that are referenced in the application. Staff has prepared a number of suggested conditions for you related to that application, and we bring that application to you for your consideration this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Fincham. Board members, if you had time to take a look at this staff report, I'll open it up for questions. Mr. Forehand?
Mr. Fincham?
Yes, sir.
Was the 175, is that, was that the number pulled from the capacity, the drain field?
Yes, sir.
And if they were to bring in supplemental porta-potties like everything else does?
Their special event, I mean, I'm sorry, their special events permit limits them to 175, so we've kept this consistent with the special events permit.
Okay, so their overall governing umbrella?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
And this wouldn't allow them to go outside of that?
No, sir.
Would there be some process for them to be able to go outside of this?
I think we would need to look at expanding the drain field.
No, like if they were to temporarily bring in porta-potties and such, because they're not required to have a drain, as I understand.
They actually have a drain field for their existing facility that the board has approved.
Right.
What I would suggest is that we keep it at the 175 at least for the first event, and if it's determined that that's something the board wants to look at or the.
Uh, and if it's determined that that's something the board wants to look at or the applicants want to pursue, then that would give us time to work out that detail prior to the second event.
There wasn't any uh, balking at the number? Was that a?
Uh, this is what was provided to, to staff.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Forehand, Mr. Black. Mr. Sealy?
So they're coming back because they're doing music because, I mean, I was just kind of surprised that what's, what's precipitating the new, the new?
The, the music festival, the fact that they're holding the, the live uh, uh, music that they're going to sell tickets for.
Mr. Sealy, if I, if I may, also, I think because of the fact when they came to us, I think the idea was to be a, a venue and so forth. And with COVID, they haven't been able to do much of anything. Um, and they're a business that's struggling, like a lot of businesses out there. And I think they're just trying to, um, they've done a lot of work. They've spent a lot of money. And I think what they're trying to do is try to get some, promote their business and get some business out there. So I think this is kind of the reason, one of the reasonings behind it.
And we're, and we're going to, we're going to hold them to three this year?
Yes, sir, that'd be correct.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Sealy. Ms. Long?
Yes, uh, is there going to be alcohol at these festivals, I would assume? Because I see nothing here about deputies.
That's right. We do not regulate alcohol on premises. They, they have to comply with ABC laws. Uh, they'll be required to coordinate with the sheriff's office uh, prior to the event in terms of parking needs or any other law enforcement needs related to each event individually.
Okay. And then my other question is, it is one to midnight, and then there's a statement here saying all music shall end later than midnight, but there's not going to be more than eight hours of live music. It seems to me we would want the music to, to stop at like 11, so if it's going to end at 12, you have people to get off. Also, I'm wondering about neighbors?
Well, they.
I know they have a field, I know there's woods, but I know there's also some houses on the, on the edges. So have they contacted?
The events are still subject to the noise ordinance, and that's one of the conditions uh, that, that's in staff's recommendation. So they're still subject to noise ordinance provisions with these conditions. Uh, I believe one of the events is actually scheduled um, New Year's Eve, where you traditionally have your, your, your music at midnight to ring in the new year. Um, so um, I think we felt, we were concerned about, about the noise, but we also felt that the noise ordinance would address any issues related to that.
Oh, and then I was also surprised of the New Year's Eve one that they would not want to go, change that time, but that's their decision from like, you know, three to one.
Yes, ma'am. Again, the, the times were based upon their, their request.
Oh, I don't know. I still, I still think we need time to get people out of there so they're not in violation of their permit, but again, I'll let them run their business. I don't, I, I think they'll do a fine job of it. It's just those were my couple of concerns that struck me when I read through this.
Surprisingly, I have no question.
Thank you. I think there in terms of, you know, stopping at 12, and if there's an issue, I think they can come back because we have a conversation about the time. So let's, let's give them an opportunity. If they do well, there's no need for us to intervene or interfere. If there are no complaints, there's no need. If there is, then we can have a conversation.
And Mr. Mr. Chairman, also, the other thing is, when, when they, when they came to us originally for the event, um, they had all their neighbors surrounding them in support. So it'd be one thing if this was controversial, but their neighbors, we've had other events where we had surrounding controversy with neighbors.
Right, and I under, I understand that, but that was for, for wedding venues, not for music festivals. So I just wanted to make sure they were still okay.
Okay.
I think as long as they have an, an avenue to someone to hear their complaint, if there is one, I think that's important that we have, be able to sit down and come to an amenable agreement. So I think it, I think we'll, I think we're okay.
Yep. So, Mr. Chairman, if I may?
Yes.
Um, I'd like to make the motion that we approve the festival permit for a music festival.
Second.
For Callie and Mr. Sullivan?
Second.
There's, there's a motion to approve the festival permit for Frederick and Callie Sullivan. Proper second by Mrs. Long. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Mr. Fincham, we will issue the permit. At this time, we will take a uh, break till 7:30. We'll come back and we'll, we'll do public comment. Again, if there's anyone which is to speak regarding during public comment, please sign up so we can uh, go through public comment expeditiously. Thank you, and we are now recessed. In the April 13th, 21, 2021 Board of Supervisors meeting, I misspoke for public comment. Do not need to sign up. You merely need to come forward, state your name, your voting district, and we will give you three minutes. Remember to address all comments to the board. Yes, ma'am. Address all comments to the board. Um, and not, right. So at that point, I will open up uh, public comment. Anyone else wishing to speak? Please come forward, state your name and voting district. Sorry about that. Yes, ma'am.
Good evening. My name is Penny Tan. I'm originally from China, and I'm now a US citizen living in Fairfax County. For cultural re-
Living where?
Fairfax County.
Fairfax County. Yes, ma'am.
For cultural reasons, Chinese people believe that a person's body should remain intact after death. As a result, people in China do not want to donate the organs. Yet sadly, in the early 2000s, Chinese hospitals begin advertising short wait times for vital organs. Where did all these human organs come from? Extensive and credible reports have revealed that the Chinese Communist Party, CCP, has been killing prisoners of conscience, most of them Falun Gong practitioners, in order to sell the organs. A prominent international human rights organization recently stated, first organ harvesting has been committed for years throughout China on a significant scale. And the Falun Gong practitioners have been one and probably the main source of organ supply. You may find additional documentation in the handouts we provided. China has become a major international center for organ transplants. And many Americans, patients travel there for this purpose. In fact, a Northern Virginia resident recently received an offer from China of a kidney transplant for $50,000. This issue should concern us here in Caroline County because members of our community who need an organ might consider traveling to China for a transplant. Here in the US, the wait time for matching kidney or liver can take several years. But in China, they can supply a match in a matter of weeks or less. Can you imagine finding out after the fact that your new organ was taken from a person who had been imprisoned for his religious beliefs and then executed so the CCP should sell you his organ? Please consider passing a resolution alerting our residents and our medical professionals about this issue so then may make an informed decision before traveling to China for an organ transplant. Thank you very much.
Thank, thank you. Xie xie.
Good evening. My name is Jisung Bay. I'm originally from South Korea, and I am now an American citizen living in Fairfax County. I would like to offer additional comments on first organ harvesting in China. Falun Gong is a spiritual practice involving gentle exercises, meditation, and the virtues of truthfulness, compassion, and tolerance. It has benefited the holistic health of over 100 million people around the world. Because of Falun Gong's immense popularity and its emphasis on spirituality, the Chinese Communist Party, CCP, considered it a threat. As a result, the head of the CCP launched the persecution of Falun Gong in July 1999. Countless practitioners have been tortured, killed, or disappeared to this day. Shortly after the persecution began, the number of organs available for transplant suddenly increased in China. Ms. Chen Yan Wang is a survivor of the CCP's persecution who lives right here in Virginia. The police in China killed her husband for protecting her. She spent seven years in prison for telling people about Falun Gong. She was also blood tested to determine the compatibility of her organs for potential transplant. If someone goes to China for a transplant, this could very possibly result in the death of an innocent Falun Gong practitioner. The issue of first organ harvesting in China has been underreported in the US media in response to a total of nine counties in Virginia, including Fairfax, Prince William, and Spotsylvania, recently passed resolutions to educate their residents about the practice. And today, I ask you to do the same. Please introduce and pass a resolution to raise awareness of this issue. We are submitting petitions from several dozen local residents in support of this request. Your action will help prevent the citizens of Caroline County from becoming the unwilling accomplices to the murder of innocent people. It, it will also help educate our citizens that the Chinese people and the Chinese Communist Party are not one and the same. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Samida.
Can you give it to Mr. Parkman, please? Which one of them gave a speech? Huh? Who gave a speech? Uh, I'm not sure. I'm not sure. I just saw. I'm not sure. First speaker? Yes, ma'am. Your name, please, and voting district?
Good evening, Chairman Underwood, Vice Chairman Black, Mr. Thomas, Mr. Forehand, Mr. Sealy, and Ms. Long. My name is Kim Haslop, and I'm a resident of the Mattapanai District as well as a devoted employee of Caroline County Public Schools. I began my journey here 25 years ago and can honestly say that it's been one of the greatest pleasures of my life to work with the students, families, teachers, staff, and leadership of Caroline County. In addition to being a resident of Caroline and a CCPS employee, I am also. Am I okay?
No, is this public comment or schools?
Public comment related to the school budget?
No, I, I don't think that's allowed at this meeting. We will have a public hearing regarding the budget.
Well, no, the first, the first part is public comment about anything that's not a public hearing. After public comment, we'll have the public hearing for the budget, and then you should speak.
I apologize. Okay.
Not your fault at all. But you're, you're.
You're in the right place.
Right place at the wrong time, so just.
Okay. Take a pause and then.
Right, let me finish public comment, and then we'll come back soon. Okay, you, you did sign up, correct?
I did.
Okay.
Yeah.
Again, this is public hearings first.
Public comment.
Public comments first. I guess I'm confusing people. This is public comments first. So anyone else who'd like to speak in public comment, please come forward.
About anything that's not a public hearing.
Anything that's not a public hearing.
Right.
Good evening. Um, I'm Raymond Quash of the Rita Church District. Uh, good evening, Mr. Chairman, supervisor. I'm here to bring up a subject about two things y'all might not want to hear about, the monuments. You got, first, there's one on 301 South, going south, that people pass it every day. Ninety percent of the people don't even know it's out there. It sits in the woods. And I'm trying to figure out why do they count it? I don't know where they counted on it or placed it there. Why is it sitting in the woods and not in that clear spot where it can be seen? To me, it's, it's a waste because the woods are growing up and trash and everything else is going around it.
No.
Um, what I was told years ago that that was put there because of, people used to stop there and eat lunch and to commemorate people stopping there and eating lunch. But ninety percent of people don't even know where that monument is made, or this, whatever you want to call it.
That's, um, which, which monument is that, Mr. Quash?
Uh, what is it, the Janet? Uh, I don't know, you know, um, it sits right going just before you get to Mattapanai River. It's that back over in the woods. Unless you know it's over there. It's a big white stone. If you want to see it, I got it on.
It's not, it's not Campbell, um, but I know what you're talking about. Okay, go ahead.
It sits over there, and I'm just wondering why it's back in the woods. You know, nobody seems to. And I talked to Mr. Reitman and Kevin, and he said that he could move it at any time if he only need the board approval to move it, you know, to bring it into where if you, if you put a monument, I thought it was placed there for people to see.
Campbell is what it says.
Yeah. And the other one is, I haven't figured this out yet. You have the abyss with all the Caroline major people on, sitting on Coathouse Lane. Um, my view on that, why not move that monument in front of the courthouse where people who are traveling will see it and will tell you about all the things that happened in Caroline? On Coathouse, unless you know, a lot of people don't even know that's just there. You know, it tell you about the loving, it tell you about Secretary Christine Tillman and all the people. That need to be sitting in front of where, where people who are coming through, tourists come through, they will see and they will stop. Nobody go get out their car and ride down Coathouse Lane to look at their abyss. I think it's a waste. Why not put it where the Confederate monument was? And that's where the tourists will be. I think that's our tourist site. So why not? Thank you for taking my, taking the time.
Thank you, Mr. Quash.
Okay.
Is there anyone else who'd like to speak during public comment?
Mr. Thomas? You seem to know, what's the location of that again? Just before the Mattapanai on 301?
Uh, the, the one he's speaking of is, as you're going south away from Bowling Green, it's on the left-hand side. I believe it says Campbell.
Right-hand side.
No, going from Bowling Green.
Wow.
Yeah. Anyhow, I, I think that's the one that says Campbell, which I think is a private monument. It's on private land. It's not a county thing. I, I thought he was originally talking about the Gabriel plaque that the county asked the state to put there that, that isn't necessarily accessible. I, I asked Veed out a couple of years ago to put gravel there. It's really not a pull-off, stop-and-see site, so I guess we'll have to look at this one a little more.
Is, is there anyone else who'd like to speak during public comment? Is there anyone else who'd like to speak during public comment? Hearing none. Public comment is now closed. We will now move on to public hearing. First on the agenda is the proposed amendment of Chapter 56 of Caroline County, our hunting ordinance. Mr. Parkman?
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, back at you before you again tonight to discuss a proposed ordinance that would repeal and replace the county ordinance uh, regarding hunting and allow hunting with rifles larger than 22 caliber uh, under- regarding hunting and allow hunting with rifles larger than .22 caliber under certain conditions. We have attempted to take all the comments from the last discussion, I believe on March the 9th, and incorporate them into the new ordinance that you have in your packet. Some of the changes that have been made is that the height requirement for the elevated platform has been reduced from 10 feet to eight feet. The new ordinance allows the discharge of a rifle on the ground to, when necessary, to dispatch a deer who's been wounded from the elevated stand. And the new ordinance also indicates, as our current ordinance does, that rifles may be used for hunting groundhogs, coyotes, and feral hogs. And finally, the public hearing was written in a way to allow the board to also consider replacing the existing ordinance, I'm sorry, repealing the existing ordinance without replacing it. We talked about this at the last meeting, and under that scenario, state law would then govern hunting in Caroline County. If the board wishes to make changes to the ordinance in time for them to be effective the next hunting season, you need to adopt an ordinance tonight to allow time to get it in the Virginia Department of Wildlife Management, Virginia Hunting and Trapping Guide. We have to get the new ordinance to them prior to May 1st. That concludes my comments. Mr. Chairman, be happy to answer any questions.
You missed a pardon. I will now open up the public hearing. The public hearing is now open for the proposed amendment of Chapter 56 of the Code of Caroline County for Hunting. There's anyone else who would, anyone who would like to speak about this matter? Please come forward. Public hearing is now open. Is there anyone who would like to speak regarding this matter? Thank you, Lord. Is there anyone who'd like to speak regarding this matter? Hearing none. Public hearing for Hunting Code 56. Chapter 56 of the Code of Caroline County for Hunting is now closed. Board members, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman, we debated this at length, I mean, to death, and I think that what staff has presented is exactly what we articulated that evening. I make a motion. We approve the proposed amendment to Chapter 56 of the Code of Caroline County as presented by staff this evening.
I'll second that.
There's a motion that we approve the proposed amendment of Chapter 56 of the Code of Caroline County regarding hunting. There's a proper second by Mr. Sealy. Is there any discussion, I mean, by Mr. Black? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The proposed amendment passes. Second public hearing tonight is the county administrator's proposed fiscal budget 2021-22. Mr. Cully?
Put my podium away.
Man.
Yeah, that was bright down here. I know it was bright up there. Now you can't see anything. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, present to you the FY 2022 proposed budget. Hopefully, we'll have it on the screen here a second. There's a lot of technology. When we try to zoom this in and get it displaying everywhere it needs to display across the zoom and going out, so I'm hoping it's going to appear in front of me here shortly. I can see it great. Yeah, I know, I can see it great, but I was waiting for it to eventually show up into Zoom. I wouldn't say exactly great. I need a bigger TV down here, but... David's working on it. Slowly coming. The FY 22 general fund budget is $55,592.26, which is $90,491.54 more, or 0.16% more than FY 21. And you can flip sides when you... Give it a second. The FY 21, ugh, pop filter. The FY 21 budget of $55,501.9 had a one-time payment to VDOT of $2,450,000, which we have made, by the way, that had matching revenue from a borrowing. So the payment is gone, as well as the equal amount of revenue in that it was financed. Next slide. The true way to look at the FY 21 to FY 22 budget is to remove the VDOT payment from the total. So if you removed it from 21, then that total budget would have been, general fund budget, would have been $53,505,009.9. So the difference between 21 and 22 would then be $2,540,491.54. What makes up this increase? And some of you have seen this before, the major increases to the FY 22 budget. Number one, transfer to school operations fund for 5% match to state funds for salary increases in the amount of $806,321, which is an increase of 5.55% of the transfer amount, and is also 31.35% of the major increases to the general fund. Number two, the creation of a public safety step plan and the associated cost equals $647,279.50 for FY 22, and it is 25.16% of the major increases to the general fund. Number three is the transfer to the debt retirement fund. It's increasing by $255,780.31, or 4.41%, and it's actually 9.94% of the major increases to the general fund. The number four project is the proposed salary increase of 5% for the remaining county employees, which equals $245,112, and it's 9.53% of the major increases to the general fund. Number five is the transfer to the Don Waste Water Fund, depreciation in the amount of $141,513, and is 5.5% of the major increases to the general fund. Number six is the increase for law enforcement, non-salary, and personnel-related of $137,548.64, or 2.90% increase, and is 5.35% of the major increases to the general fund. Number seven is the 5% salary increase that's mandated for constitutional office employees of $92,110, and is 3.58% of the major increases to the general fund. Number eight, increases to the regional correction institutions of $89,416, or 4.46%, and it's 3.48% of the major increases to the general fund. Numbers get smaller, percentages too. Number nine is the increase for Parks and Rec for a new program and for the library to meet increase in minimum wage of $82,207.71, which is 7.73% increase to those budgets total and 3.20% of the major fund increases. Last but not least, the increase for electoral board and elections and the registrar of $75,086.28, or 28.74% of their budgets and 2.92% of the major increases to the general fund. So those are the top 10 things that are increases. Those total top 10 major increases to the general fund equals out to $2,572,374.44. The difference between the FY 21 without the VDOT payment and FY 22 is $2,540,941.54, leaving a difference of, remaining change in the FY 22 general fund budget is $31,882.89 less. Real estate tax revenue. FY 22 per penny equals $316,892.97. Pennies needed to fund a major FY 22 increases equals 8.1 cents. Revenue in the 21 budget that's not in the 22 from the Caroline Detention Facility Fund in the amount of $955,800. The pennies needed to replace the detention fund revenue equals 3 cents. Total pennies needed for new expenses and less the CDF revenue equals 11.1 cents. Carryover from the fund balance needed with a 10-cent increase would be $118,729.6. At an 8-cent increase to the real estate tax rate, the amount needed from the fund balance would be $752,514.99. Also, at an 8-cent increase, the fund balance at $630.21 should increase by $1,166,166.12. This would be a one-time increase as a result of the tax increase coming in June of the FY 21 budget. After balancing the FY 22 budget with the $752,514.99, the fund balance would still see an increase, would increase by an amount of the one-time increase by $413,651.13. This does not account for the other possibility that the fund balance may grow even more if projected FY 21 revenues exceed the FY 21 expenses as is the normal case. There are no new positions in the county budget. We do have six vehicles in various departments that equal $134,500. Total proposed would be lease purchase. This gives you an overview of all the funds in the total combined county budget. So the social service fund, you'll see, is decreasing a little bit down to $3,856,693. It's about 2.78% of our total combined budget. The CSA fund is even at $2.3 million. That's remained a constant number now for many years. The debt retirement fund is increasing to $8,548,60, and that's a $326,115 increase, and that's 7.70% of the total combined budgets. Law libraries is small. It's hardly anything. Next slide, I don't read all these. I just got to put them in there for the math. Courthouse Maintenance Fund there again is same. Tourism funds are remaining pretty close to the same. Fire rescue grant, proffers fund, all these are very low, as you can see. Don Program Income Housing is down to $5,000. Economic Development Fund, 51. Utilities Fund, that's a big number, but it is going down. That's decreasing. It's going down to $6,520,307. It's about a $1,49,094 decrease. It's 5% of the total. Don Waste Water is up, as you saw. That was one of our increases for depreciation. The detention center funds, I predict those to be down about $666,480. The CARES Act Fund, that's decreasing. We are expecting $3 million in '22, but we will get that probably around May of '22. The CIP Fund, that's decreasing from $6,431,296 to $1,341,340, which is $5,089,956 decrease, but it's only 1.21% of our budget. School CIP is actually increasing $121,000 to $899,689. It's a 15% increase, but there again, it's only 0.81% of the overall budget. The general fund, as we mentioned, is increasing $90,492. It's 27.05% of our overall combined budgets. Transfers are increasing to other funds, 5.1%, which is about $1,250,718. School Operations Fund is increasing to $46,46,974, which is $1,250,339. That's a 2.79% change. It's 41.46% of the total budget. Textbook funds decreasing a little bit. Remember, textbook fund is set by the state, so we just have to fund the match. We're proposing to fund that match. The school special grant fund is increasing from $2,013,48 to $5,5980. That's 149.01% increase. School cafeteria funds is increasing $15,800. Should be near a total. Total combined funds for FY 21, the total combined budgets were $116,639,800. For FY 22, it's proposed $111,70,255, and you can see that's a decrease of $5,568,825. As you saw, most of that was in capital, where we went down a significant amount on the CIP, as we financed most of that stuff in those projects just recently. Total general fund department request, you'll find this interesting, was $61,687,744, increasing from FY 21 by $6,187,243. The county administrator's proposed budget cut $6,96,751 from the department request. The general fund budget. General Government Administration, which is obviously my office, treasurer, commissioner, IT, various other small departments, is increasing to $3,915,794. It's $24,985. It's 7.04% of the general fund. Electoral board and officials, as we talked about earlier, is increasing to $336,321. It's a $75,086 increase. It's only 0.60% of the total general fund budget. The judicial is increasing to $891,515. That's a $39,601 increase. Commonwealth Attorney is increasing to $686,212. That's a $33,102 increase, 5.07% increase. Public Safety, as we mentioned earlier, is increasing to $16,190,570. It's $887,991 total, and that does also include regional jails and things. It's not just law enforcement, fire and rescue. That's a 5.80% change, and it's 29.12% of the general fund budget. Public Works increasing to $4,387,821. It's $23,611, only 0.54%, and it's 7.89% of the general fund budget. Parks, Health and Human Services, increasing only $1,010. It's going to stay randomly flat. It's $559,334. It's 1% of the general fund budget. Parks, Rec, and Recreational and Cultural is increasing to $1,184,564, a $114,223 increase. It's 10%, 10.67% increase to the budgets and 2.13% of the total general fund budget. Community Development is increasing to $1,348,586. It's an $11,812 increase. It's a 10.67% change, and it's 2.43% of the total. Environmental Management is not increasing. That's about $93. Remember, that's Hanover, Caroline soil. We handle their account for them. And Cooperative Extension, the last little department we have, is increasing to $2,966 to $79,898. Now, the other large part in our budget is transfers. The transfer to debt retirement fund is going down just a little bit to $3,992,851. It's 7.18% of the general fund budget. Transfer to the social services fund, $563,498. It's a $35,905 increase. It's 1.01% of the general fund budget. Transfer to the CSA fund is barely up at all, and it remains pretty flat at $748,853, and it's also 1.35% of the general fund budget. Transfer to debt retirement, which is a percentage of personal property. We also transfer on a formula is up to $2,61,572. That's a $284,355 increase. It's 16%, and it's 3.71% of the general fund budget. Transfer to the Caroline Utility Fund is up, but only slightly, $1,588,051. It's 2.86% of the general fund budget. And transfer to the Don Waste Water Fund, as we mentioned earlier, is up to $317,534. It's up about 111%, $167,601, but it's only 0.57% of the general fund budget. It's up about 111%, $167,601, but it's only 0.57% of the General Fund Budget. Transfer to Schools' Operations Fund posed to $15,346,962. That's an $806,321 increase. It's 5.55% change, and it's 27.61% of the General Fund Budget. Transfer to Textbooks is down just slightly, $1,298, and that is set by state formula. Transfer to Schools CIP for bus purchases is up to $536,689. That's about an $18,149 increase. And it's 0.97% of the General Fund Budget. And Transfer to Schools' Operations Bus Leases is actually going down to $232,820, because we haven't leased any buses now in a number of years, and we're paying off the ones we have. So that's down $42,267, 15% down, and it's 0.42% of the General Fund Budget. Total General Fund Transfer to Schools All In, somebody asked me this last night, $16,269,589. That's a $780,905 increase, and that's 5.04%. And it's 29.27% of the General Fund Budget. Overview of the Schools. School Operation Fund, $46,46,900. It's increasing $1,250,339 or 2.79%. As I mentioned, the textbook fund's going down about 1.11% or $4,836 combined. Schools Special Funds, as I mentioned earlier, is up to $5,5,980. Food Services, it's up $15,000. Total School Budget, $53,838,841, increasing $4,256,935 or 8.59%. Local Funds to Schools, $15,346,2962 is increasing at 806. The Textbook Fund I mentioned, the Bus Leases I mentioned, Schools CIP, I just kind of put this for clarity. Go ahead. Local School Funds, subtotal to Schools is $16,269,589. It's increasing at 78905 or 5.04%. When you add in the Schools CIP of $363,000, that's not already going to the CIP for the buses. And then you add in, somebody asked me this last night as well, School Debt Service of $4,950,957, which is increasing just $5,934. The total local funds for Schools projected for '22 is $21,583,546. And that's going to be tough to read past that. Look better on my computer monitor. I'd like to give a special thanks and help for preparation of the FY22 budget to Tamika Smith, Director of Finance, Alan Harton, Deputy County Administrator, and Mike Fincham, Director of Planning and Community Development. And that's all I have right now, and I'll be back for the CIP public hearing.
Thank you, Mr. Colley.
Can I ask him one question before we go?
Mr. Colley. Mr. Colley, during your presentation, you said that there would be some COVID funds coming in May.
Yeah, but that'll be coming. We'll have COVID funds this May, but that's not what I'm talking about. We'll get them a year later in '22.
May of 2022?
And it's in this?
But it's in this budget year, so we'll have it available in May, but it's in this budget year already, this budget.
We'll have $3 million in a week or two, but that'll be in '21. And then we get three more in '22, which is reflected within the documents. There's no expenditures projected. It just shows in there that that money's there. We got to come up with a plan for what we can use that for.
All right, and I just wanted to make sure I was clear, because I thought you said May '22, but maybe a few weeks from now.
Yeah, we should get some right now that we'll have to decide on, and all of it, we don't have to spend until '24, December of '24.
Thank you.
Now I'd like to open the public comment regarding the public hearing regarding the County Administrator's Proposed Fiscal Year 2021 Budget. If there's anyone who would like to speak, please come to the mic, state your name, Magisterial District. And I'll actually, I'll give you a call. I have a list of names, and I will call those names. You'll have three minutes to speak. Public Hearing is now open regarding the proposed FY2021 Budget. And Ms. Kim Harrislop, I think you're first. Thank you.
Take two.
All right, we'll try.
Sorry about that. I was overly, overly excited before. Good evening again, Chairman Underwood, Vice Chairman Black, Mr. Thomas, Mr. Forehand, Mr. Celia, Ms. Long. My name is Kim Harrislop. I'm a resident of the Mattapani District as well as devoted employee of Caroline County Public Schools. I started my journey here 25 years ago and can honestly say that it's been one of the greatest pleasures of my life to work with the students, families, teachers, staff, and leadership in Caroline County. In addition to being a resident of the county and a CCPS employee, I'm also the proud parent of a Caroline High School senior. I believe it goes without saying that I'm fully dedicated and committed and invested in our school system and in our county. Although I've attended meetings and followed the budget process over the years, I haven't felt compelled to speak until today. Over the years, I've watched former superintendents and financial directors come before this board to provide financial and budgetary information, former and current superintendents, I'm sorry, to request funding and to support what many believe to be this community's greatest asset, the school system. Many times, the tone of responses and comments in meetings have suggested that the school system should feel badly or that the leadership is doing something wrong by requesting adequate funding to support the very entity claimed to be so important. This past year has been challenging, to say the least. Our teachers and staff in all areas have had to venture into uncharted territory over and over again. Overall, they, we, have done so with grace and with a constant focus on the needs of the students and their families. To not take advantage of the chance to provide the necessary funding to complete the third year of the Salary Study and to bring salaries in line with surrounding divisions, competitive divisions, would be a tragic missed opportunity and would communicate the message yet again that the school division is indeed not really a priority. Never before, and I say this honestly, never before have we had such a collective powerhouse of senior staff leadership and building administrators working for the good of the school system. These folks are brilliantly smart, hardworking, honest, decent, transparent, and sincerely dedicated to the very best interests of Caroline students, teachers, staff, and families. They truly are good stewards of all funds allocated to the system.
30 seconds, please.
And the budget requests and recommendations that have been put before you are reasonable, intentional, and sound. You see, our leadership can see the writing on the wall. They know that a board that fully funds its school system sends a message to people and businesses in surrounding areas that this county, our county, is a place to be, a place to live, a place to start a business, and a place to raise a family. With full funding, a domino effect comes into play, and soon a scenario in which we all benefit comes into place, firmly in place. As a veteran Caroline educator, a longtime resident, and a parent of a high school student, I implore you to vote to approve the CCS, CCPS budget, to look for and welcome every opportunity to provide full funding for the school system for so many reasons. Now, right now is the time to do that. Take this opportunity, please, to communicate a message to our teachers, staff, students, and families. A message that says you are the best, our students are the best, and we will stand beside you with the monetary support to show that we believe it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Harrislop. I'll let you go over a little bit, because I want to hear it. Thank you. Let me say that, let me say that during the public hearing, there should be no applause. I understand there's plenty of support, and we're going to listen to all the support. We ask that you refrain from any applause. Second on the list is Paige Carter, followed by Corinne Griggs.
That's Dr. Paige Carter.
That's right. Thank you. Put my glasses on so I can see what I want to say. Good evening, Chairman Underwood and members of the board. My name is Dr. Paige Carter, and I am a proud resident of the Mattapani District and an even more proud member of the most dedicated educational team I have ever served on in my 30 years in special education. Tonight, I'm here to advocate for the children of our county who are amazing learners and deserve highly qualified teachers. We have an extremely dedicated group of teachers and educators, paraeducators, principals. We have a compensation problem, though. We can't continue to overlook it or, in your words, kick it down the road. We simply cannot compete. I could spend some of my time begging for reversion funds that should return to the school division or about the capital improvement needs, the wrestling facility, but I won't. I have a far more specific request. Among the needs presented to you by the school division was a behavior support program, including a teacher and a para-professional to support students with emotional disabilities at Caroline High School. This position would allow students who are currently in expensive private day placements to have a place to return when they are ready. It would also be a place for current Caroline High School students who need this level of support to remain here in the county, in their home school. While this impacts a small number of students, a program like this has the opportunity and potential to provide much-needed support and overhaul the entire atmosphere. This is also a potential cost savings to Caroline County taxpayers as private day placements, as you know, are funded locally through CSA funds. And the need for these placements will likely be reduced with a program like this. Please consider funding this request. With the rest of my time, I'd like to request something as a citizen of Caroline, a voting citizen of Caroline, that you, as the board, collaborate and participate with county agencies, including the school division, from a perspective of humility, service, respect, and trust. I have always sought to be a helper in every situation I find myself, and I'm sure you do as well. Why else would you be serving in the roles that you're serving? I would like to invite you to visit our schools and see firsthand what we're doing. There are great things happening that will change the future of our county. I see your role not only to be a good steward of the taxpayers' money. As a taxpayer, I appreciate that. But even more important, I see you to be a helper, to raise up the citizens of our county, especially the youngest ones. We should be working together, not in opposition to one another. I ask that you be intentional and govern with integrity and servant hood, not from a place of power, that your words, actions, and budget decisions always reflect that position, whether in public, in private, and especially in sidebar. The example that you set from your seats is very critically important to the future of our students. Thank you for your consideration and your time.
Thank you. Ms. Corinne Griggs, followed by Kelly Wanrow. Ms. Griggs.
Good evening, Chairman Underwood, Vice Chair Mr. Black, members of the board. My name is Corinne Griggs, and I am a resident of a little slice of heaven in Don within the Reedy Church District, a mother of a Bowling Green Elementary Husky and the proud principal of Caroline Middle School. I am here tonight to advocate for the fiscal year '22 budget requests as all three of these roles. First, a large portion of the request lies in employment compensation and pay raises for all staff. This item is necessary in order to increase retention and compete with neighboring divisions. As you know, Salary Study has showed that we ranked 14th out of 16 in compensation, resulting in Caroline being often overlooked when qualified employees are considering applying for vacancies. Attracting highly qualified employees yields stronger content knowledge and expertise in our classrooms for our students. Additionally, when considering teachers at the higher end of the pay scale, we are unable to compensate them at the rate that they are receiving in other divisions, resulting in those offers being declined. Next, I will speak specifically to the additional positions that we have been prioritizing at CMS. We have asked for a health and PE teacher, as currently they maintain rosters of 30 to 35 students in classes with an AB rotation, and teachers are having to teach in upwards of 190-plus students each week. We are required to compensate teachers who service in excess of 200 students per week. With many of our health and PE teachers nearing that ratio, it would be a better use of funds to employ an additional staff rather than overexert and task our current teachers with more students for a minuscule amount of their pay. We have also prioritized a teaching position to facilitate a theater and forensics course. Supporting this will allow more students to get their first choice in electives, decrease class sizes in all electives, and follow a logical theater arts path aligned with the CTE program at the high school. Many of our current electives offered have mandated seat caps, resulting in non-capped classes being overcrowded. The third prioritized position is a special education teacher, simply to meet standards of quality. Ideal ratios for special education classes should be 1/3 or less students with disabilities and 2/3 general education. Many of our current classes maintain a 50% ratio respectively. Furthermore, due to limited staffing in this department, we have some special education teachers having to teach at all three grade levels and in multiple content preparations, limiting their ability to co-plan with their content teachers. With the focus on providing equity for our special education population, it is necessary that we are able to hire another staff to support our needs. Lastly, we ask for funds to maintain the positive momentum we have generated during virtual learning as it is a resounding expectation of our community. We have successfully navigated this hurdle and solved numerous technology problems that other divisions have not. And it should be recognized that funds are necessary to continue to build and maintain that area of success. So in closing, supporting the budget request will have a tremendous impact on our most precious constituents, the students. Being able to provide them with the best teachers, smaller class sizes, and more course options, as well as technology resources and supports, is a must. So as a resident, let me offer my literal and proverbial two cents. I am willing to happily do my part and pay the necessary real estate tax increase to ensure that this happens for them. Thank you for your continued support and grace.
Thank you. Next is Ms. Kelly Wanrow, and then Dr. Joanna Rollins Feld. Wan, W-A-N-R-O-W, Wanrow.
You pronounced it right, too. Good job. Hello, members of the board. Thank you for the opportunity to share my thoughts on the proposed budget. I am Mrs. Wanrow, a teacher at Bowling Green Elementary, and I am here to ask that you grant funding to our schools specifically.
Can you please give me your voting district? Your magistrate, where do you vote? Your magisterial district?
My voting district is not in Caroline County. I'm here as an employee to the school board, to the schools. I am specifically hoping that you will provide funds for the Caroline County employees' salaries. The reason why is simple. Surrounding counties pay their teachers more. So if we want to retain quality educators here in Caroline, then we need to have compensation that is competitive with our neighboring counties. Two years ago, I was teaching at Henrico when I bought a home in King William. This move increased my daily commute by 20 minutes, and that was enough for me to look into positions at schools closer to my new home, which is how I found myself here. When I was offered a position in Caroline County, I did accept a bit of a pay cut. I was initially okay with this because of two reasons. Number one, Caroline County is more rural, so it made sense that I would make less than in Henrico, working here. And reason number two, I was told that I would receive a yearly pay increase, so I was under the impression that by now, my salary would at least be what it was when I left Henrico. However, this did not happen because last year's pay increase was skipped. So at this time, I am still making less than I was when I left Henrico two years ago. And as a teacher with five years' experience, I would now be making approximately $50,000 if I still worked in Henrico, which is significantly more than my current salary is now. So, as I said in the beginning, it was just 20 extra minutes on my commute that caused me to leave Henrico. it was just 20 extra minutes on my commute that caused me to leave Henrico. And as you compare our employee compensation to our neighboring counties, I will close with this rhetorical question. What's keeping me here? Not only me, but the many high-quality educators with whom I work. What's keeping us here in Caroline? Thank you.
Dr. Jawanda Rollins Philms, followed by Dr. Sarah Calverick.
Good evening Chairman Underwood, Vice Chair Black. I did speak to Mr. Underwood, and I did let him know that tonight I would be speaking to address the comments that were made at last night's meeting. And I have some prepared statements, but I'm gonna just speak my mind. I want to be very clear because as an elected official, we have a responsibility to the citizens whom which we serve and those that we represent. I have worked very hard to make sure that my character and my integrity has been exactly who I portray myself to be. And in front of an audience full of people who are on my collaborative team, I want to be very clear that I never said, "Give us our money. Shut up and get out of the way." I never said that. I appreciate you, Mr. Underwood, recapping and recounting at the top of the meeting. I'm not asking you to apologize for what you said, but I will speak my truth and say that I did not say that. However, what I did say was that I did not appreciate the sentiments of that comment because I felt that they were misconstrued. They were ill-representative of my statements and that of other board members, and that they were positioned in a way that threw the school system under the bus to speak literally, and it was not appropriate. I felt that it was positioned to continue to garner the mistrust and the disrespect that many people have already spoken about. And so on today, I want to say publicly, what would happen if the chaos, the contention, the hurt feelings, whatever it is, was finally released? What would happen? I anticipate that we would no longer hear things like, "Don't bite the hand that feeds you," or "I want to make them hurt." When I went to the website of the Caroline County, which we all love, we live, we work, we play, we volunteered and raised our hand to serve as an elected official, and we know all is fair, love and war. The mission statement says, the vision statement says, that this is a government body, your body, and your role is to recognize the need for an enriched community while respecting our history and embracing our future. Our mission statement, Caroline County Public Schools, to empower the next generation of learners, thinkers, and leaders. And if for no other reason, that is why we must work collaboratively. I don't have any other things to say about money, dollars, cents, reversion funds. I have no new words. That information has been provided. But I will say, as a citizen born and raised, having lived and worked here, I have a senior who is graduating from Rappahanna Community College with her associate's degree on May 6 and her high school diploma on May 21. The people that are sitting behind me are the hardest-working, most courageous, educated, qualified, worthy, honorable people that I know. And they have made that possible for my child and about 4,000 other, not students, but scholars. Every person that comes behind me, I ask that you open your ears, your heart, and your mind, and you look at this budget in terms of what our scholars need in Caroline County. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Dr. Sarah Calverick, followed by Doug Allison.
Good evening Chair Underwood, Vice Chair Black, and members of the board. I'm Dr. Sarah Calverick, the proud superintendent of Caroline County Public Schools. Data, facts, graphs, charts have filled my numerous presentations and emails of the past. So tonight, I speak from the heart. I'm a champion for children. I'm a champion for teachers. I'm a champion for support staff. I'm a champion for educational leaders. I'm a champion for families and a champion for instructional opportunity. Just in general, I'm a champion for anything CCPS-related. But equally as important, I'm a cheerleader for the Caroline Sheriff's Department, the Fire EMS Department, Parks and Rec, the Caroline Y, the Community Service Board and DSS, and various Caroline religious and business organizations. I immerse myself intentionally and purposefully into the community for the betterment of Caroline because I believe in collective commitment to excellence. Excellence for schools means 3E-ready graduates. Excellence for schools means increased real estate sales and rooftops. Excellence for schools means increased economic development and revenue. Excellence for schools means recruitment and retention of the best employees. Excellence for schools means less crime. Excellence for schools means that we have a joint vision and a joint mission for our county. Excellence for schools means every community member serves as a positive testimonial, turning toward one another, not on one another. CCPS is striving for excellence. Will you strive with us? We must be willing to stand before one another, beside one another, and behind one another to achieve the collective greatness of our county. It has been said that communities are a reflection of the schools they keep. What type of schools do you want to keep? How do you communicate about schools when in the community? When you're meeting to discuss school business? When you're conducting business with schools? Or when you're appropriating funds to schools? Is the message clear? Can it be sung from the rooftops? Pride in our CCPS schools, belief in our kids. It is my hope that our commitment to excellence is shared and that your funding of our FY '22 budget, specifically staff compensation, is viewed as the most valuable investment in Caroline's future. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Calverick. Doug Allison, followed by Jesse Rollins.
Good evening, Board of Supervisors. Thank you for letting me come again. Last time I got to speak here, it was a fantastic evening and got to see government in action. And I learned a lot, too, like I hope my students do when I get to teach them. My name is Doug Allison. I am in the Mattapanai District. I'm proudly the head football coach at Caroline High School. I'm a teacher for the school system. Pleased to work with some of the greatest teachers I've ever worked with. I'm a voting resident of the county, and I'm a dad. There are always in that order, okay? Tonight, I'm gonna speak from the point of a dad. But first, an analogy as a coach. Sometimes you have tough seasons. And when you have tough seasons, you need to have something better than your record to know whether or not you're successful. For me, it's about vision, mission, core values, and then standards. And we have great ones. Our staff came up with them, and we know we're serving our kids, and they're gonna become great members of this community. I also know that this county government has some great mission and vision and core value statements. I'd like to read your core value statement. Caroline County Government is dedicated to excellence in public service. Its public servants, sorry, shall be known for their professionalism, knowledge, dedication, and willingness to go the extra mile to help people. Let's talk about that extra mile. You've got to invest in the future. Our kids deserve the best. They're as good, they're better, they're as great as anyone else in the Commonwealth. So it's time that we invest in them. We have a rare opportunity, if I understand correctly, of a windfall of funds that weren't spent. I don't care about the how or where. I understand allocation and all that fun stuff of government spending. But if we have the money and it's legal to spend it, let's put it back into the school system. The stars are aligned right now for us to meet a budget because we don't have to pay for some things that we've had to pay for in the past, including retirement increases and those things. And we have this windfall of cash that we can use towards the budget. Sorry. Let's take advantage. The school board needs to increase salaries. We need new positions. They're state-mandated positions. We need to fund, you know, much-needed facility upgrades. I'll get to that when I come up here as football coach. But as dad, I want to say this. Empirical evidence suggests that wealthier school districts score higher on standardized testing. So the thought process is, okay, if you want to have good schools, then you got to go live somewhere where everything's expensive and the jobs pay. But I'm gonna challenge you. Is it not a chicken and an egg? That shortsightedness. How did those counties become wealthy? Were they wealthy before they had a school? Or did they invest in their schools? Did they see the future? Did they believe that it would work? Guys, excuses are the nails that build houses of failure. If you believe it's right and you want it to happen, this group can find a way. Windfall, decrease spending somewhere else to increase spending somewhere where it's needed. Tax raises. I don't have property yet, but when I do, I'd be cool with it. Sales tax, I'll pay that, whatever I can do. I will serve these kids with the excellence that the core values say we have in this county. Please do the same. Thank you.
Thank you. Jesse Rollins, followed by Ada Sherrington.
Good evening. My name is Jesse Rollins, and I am from the Mattapanai District. To our chair, vice chair, and other members of our Board of Supervisors. As I mentioned about a month ago, I have been a part of our school system for over 40 years. I think I'm the last of the Don Elementary School people under the leadership of Geneva Thomas. I started my career in Caroline County Public Schools working with some of the best educators that you would ever want to sit in a classroom with, a principal that believed in her children and was not ashamed of moving you around if she felt that wasn't a class that was meeting your challenge or stepping out of her office and correcting the volume level as you moved down the hall. I have seven children that have gone through our school system, four of my own and three that found their way to their Aunt Jesse's home. Needless to say, I'm very proud of the accomplishments of my children, and I'm very proud of the fact that several of them get back to Caroline in their roles as adults. My youngest child is a new graduate of Virginia Commonwealth University. She's planning on being a teacher. At present, she's working virtually on her master's. Now, I want her to start working here because at this point, 40 years down the road, I work with some of the best educators that you ever want to be standing beside, leading you, goals and visions for the children of our community. However, with student loans, I don't know if I'm gonna be successful in encouraging her to start her career at Caroline County Public Schools. As a proud Mema of the Caroline High School Senior Class President, I can say that the education that she has received in Caroline has prepared her for her next steps as she plans to graduate with her associate's degree prior to graduating from Caroline High School. She is just one of many seniors that have risen to the challenge due to COVID and along with the staff, kept it moving to achieve their goals. But it's 2021, and here we are asking for approval of funds so we can meet the 2018 salary study. It's 2021, and the schools are asking for funds to be able to provide educational services to our children and pay the staff a respectful salary. Yes, due to COVID, some things, but schools stopped, but learning didn't. I encourage you, come on along. Do a virtual read to a classroom and see what our staff is doing. On a personal note, I must say that watching these meetings, it seems more energy is spent punishing the past and not focusing on changing the future. Our children have shown us how to be champions in spite of COVID or building conditions. To support the Caroline County Public Schools is a way of supporting our children. It's the last quarter of the championship game. We're two points down with seconds on the clock. The buzzer sounds as a three-point shot is released. Will the children of CCPS win the game? Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Rollins. Ada Sherrington, followed by Teresa Hicks. Ms. Sherrington, are you in the room or outside? If not, Ms. Hicks, would you come forward, please? Ms. Hicks, please state your name, voting district.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Teresa Hicks, and I'm the proud principal of Madison Elementary, as well as being a CCPS employee for the past 35 years. I live in the Port Royal District, and I'm here to address several items that are in the budget that impact Madison Elementary. The first item that I'd like to speak to is the additional teacher for the fourth and fifth grade. This is the second year I've come to the board to express my concerns with large class sizes. In these grades, since there are only three teachers now in each grade, for teachers in these grades to meet the rigor of the standards as well as foster student engagement, movement, and social and emotional well-being, we need smaller classes. We need you. We need your help and your financial support to add this position and increase my team from three teachers to four teachers to effectively impact teaching and learning. Madison is also seeking an additional special education support person for our most neediest classroom. Our students struggle to communicate verbally, take care of personal care needs, and need one-on-one assistance to increase their academic progress. This year has been a challenge since these students have been face-to-face since September, and we are having to pull staff members throughout the building to support us in this room. Our students deserve a consistent staff as well as a trained person who can support their needs. Madison is in support of the three-year-old program that is proposed in the budget. This program will allow us to begin supporting our youngest population in a very unique program that will foster collaboration between students with and without disabilities. With support of the budget, we can achieve great things for both Madison and Caroline County Public Schools. But most importantly, we can achieve great things for kids. We are here for them, and my noted requests are to benefit them. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much, Ms. Hicks. Samuel Perkins, followed by Sharon Swanson. Swanson. I'm sorry.
Good evening Chairman Underwood, Vice Chair Black, and other members of the Board of Supervisors. My name is Samwell Perkins. I am currently a registered voter in the Western Caroline District and soon to be a voter in the Mattapanai District. I'm an educator at Caroline High School, one of two Spanish teachers there at the time. I come before you not only as these things, but also as someone who has grown up in this county, as an alumni of this wonderful county, as someone who has invested time and sweat and money to make sure that everything that I can possibly do to award a better future for my family that not only includes my baby girl, but my students, my friends, and those around me to make this place a better place and to help people see that it is already a great place. As an educator, I have heard time and time again that my students feel as if this county is not great, as if this is a place that they do not want to be when they graduate, that they would like to leave this place, flee this place because they don't see or understand what I saw and understood growing up here, that this is a great place. Unfortunately, that vision isn't shared by some of our students. And the reality is, is because they can look to other counties, they can look to other localities close to us, cities, and see that there is a vast canyon between how we treat our school district, our public safety personnel, and the various other our school district, our public safety personnel, and the various other members in this community compared to them. Now, we all have a love and we all have a pride for our county, and I know that, I feel that pride too. But we need to start making more changes moving forward. We need to start allocating more funds to make these differences apparent to these people, these young adults who are the future of our county. I came back. Many of you have come back. Many people will continue to come back. But we need more to come back that can share that vision, share that understanding of how great Caroline is, so we can come forward, we can pay those taxes, so we can grow the revenue, so we can help people to see how beautiful it is to be here. It shouldn't be that we have police officers barely on the streets because we can't afford to pay them, especially in times like this where we need to have them out and about in the community, helping the people around them, and not just enforcing the law. We need to make sure that we have the right educators and the right amount of educators in front of our children, helping to push forward the vision of greatness that Caroline County has, so that we can help them to see that this is the place they can be and that they can stay. CCPS has done a great job of pushing forward and moving with this three-E program of helping children to see that it's not just college, that there's other ways to move forward and to grow, right? That there's ways to come back and give back to this community. We've established partnerships with other companies inside of this county to be able to help with that, too. Please help us to continue moving forward in that direction, not just with this budget that's been proposed, but with more than. Let's be better than fourteen out of sixteen. It doesn't have to be our reality. And we can change things from the past. We can start to make a difference. I thank you for your time.
Thank you. Ms. Swart. Ms. Sharon Swarton, I believe that's correct, followed by Scott Mojer.
Good evening, Mr. Chairperson, Mr. Underwood, and Board members. My name is Sharon Swanton, and I have been a teacher for twenty-two years. In those twenty-two years, I have spent sixteen of them here. And I love this job, and I love these kids. This is my home, even though I am not from Virginia. I come to you to advocate on behalf of the budget, and the reason I do is let me help you understand some things. I have three children. My daughter was a 2019 graduate. My oldest son is a sophomore at CHS, and my youngest son is a seventh grader at CMS, and they have been provided wonderful educations in this county. My husband and I have been here for sixteen years. In the sixteen years that we have been here, eight of those years we sat with our salaries frozen because the board deemed that because there was an economic downturn in the country, we did not deserve a step increase or anything like that. So for half of my time here, my salary was frozen. Just recently, after twenty-two years of teaching, I am just now barely over, like, fifty-two thousand in my compensation. My daughter, who's a 2019 graduate from Caroline High School, graduated, thought she wanted to be a CNA and a nurse, did that for about a year, went to a semester of college at VCU and decided that was not what she wanted to do. She went through the academy, trained, and she is now a 911 operator in Henrico County. And she does amazing things. She is a light on people's worst moments. What amazes me is that she came and told us the other day, Mom, we found out we're getting a pay increase because they're on the same stipulation that teachers are in Henrico County. My daughter, with one semester of college education, with going through academy and training in Henrico County, at nineteen years old, is going to be making forty-three thousand dollars a year. I have been teaching for twenty-two years, and I am barely ten thousand above her. What does that say? What does that say that you value? I look out here, and I see amazing children. I have taught over sixteen hundred children in this county. In sixteen years, I have coached them, taught them, hugged them. I worked so hard for them, and every teacher here does. Please fund this budget. Do it for these children. These children are amazing, and I will fight every day for them. My kids have had wonderful teachers, but they have watched so many of them walk away because they don't get paid enough. I live here. I'm in the Reedy Church District. I believe in these kids. This is my home, even though I'm not from here. Fund this budget, please. Do it for these children. Do it for the amazing kids that you have coming out of this county, because they deserve it, and they deserve amazing teachers who will fight tooth and nail for them. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Scott Mojer, followed by Jason Church.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, thank you for this opportunity to speak. Mr. Church had to step out with his family.
Okay.
Just so you're...
He is coming back.
I don't believe so.
Okay.
So, my name is Scott Mojer. I've been here with the Caroline County Sheriff's Office for thirty-three years. And like you, I love Caroline County. You wouldn't be in the position you were in if you didn't love this county and try to make it better. And I'm in the same position you are. I want to make this county the best that it can be, and we have an opportunity here, if you follow Mr. Cully's budget, to make the Sheriff's Office something that has never been before. We've all been through pay freezes, the state has frozen. That pay plan not only increases the starting salary to make us competitive to other jurisdictions, but it also gives the Sheriff's Office the ability to draw in individuals from other localities where we can bring them at a reasonable rate and hire people that are already certified. I know you want the best possible officers for the community, and I know that you want, when a 911 call comes in, you want an officer to be able to respond, and you want a rescue squad. I know that that's very important. Schools are absolutely important. You know, that is one of the biggest things that draw people to the county. But as the sheriff has always said, if you don't feel safe, you're not going to move into a community. And we need to have law enforcement compensated based on that pay plan so that we can move forward in a positive direction. The people you have standing in the back of the room didn't take a chair. Most everyone back there are your dedicated law enforcement officers. They're here because they love the county, just like you do. They have every opportunity to go to Spotsylvania, Stafford, and be compensated very well for their time and effort they've spent here in Caroline County. But ultimately, what we've become is a training ground for individuals to come to Caroline, get the training, spend the two-year contract that we make them sign, so that if we train them, we at least get them for two years, they have the ability to go to other jurisdictions. That pay plan can fix that problem, not only for us, but also for fire and rescue. It's just not a mere starting salary issue. Even the county had the foresight to say, hey, look, money is tight, so we're going to compensate the sergeants and deputies as they need to be compensated, but anyone over top of a sergeant has been capped. They don't get the full compensation. So a lot of thought and effort by Allen and Mr. Cully's staff has went into that pay plan, and I hope that, you know, as a citizen of the Bowling Green District, Mr. Sealy, you know, I pay taxes, and I certainly am willing to pay more taxes to make sure that the people in this community are safe. I think it's very important to realize that these men and women standing back here do not have to be here, and they're here just like you are because they're dedicated to the citizens in this community. They all have families here. Most of them are from here. They live in the community. A large percentage of our force is here and live in Caroline, and we try to strive to hire those type people because we feel like if you live in a community, you're going to care more about the community, you're going to make sure that you do a better job. So I hope you take that in consideration, raise my taxes, do whatever you have to do to benefit public safety and as well as the schools. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Mojer. Jason Church or Susan Church, did they both leave? Tony Lippa?
Chairman Underwood, Vice Chair Jeff Black, honorable members of the board. Now, Major and Mojer and I didn't even get a chance to talk, and yet, what I was going to say is very similar to what he's saying. And public safety includes police, fire, and rescue. And again, I'm pleading to y'all again of what we have here in Caroline County. I'm going to give you another spin because of the number of vacancies that we've had. Our response time has truly increased. We have a lot of people who are saying, why can't I get a deputy? This is the first time ever, as your sheriff in the fifth term, had to prioritize calls because we don't have the manpower. I'm supporting Mr. Cully, and as Major had mentioned, you had Chief Loftus there, Mr. Parton there, Tamika's been involved, Major Mojer and myself. I want the people to know, the salary increase does not include me. I'm not asking for me. I'm asking for our deputies, for our citizens, and again, you have the power to do that. I trust each and every one of you will. We've been hurting in Caroline. I think we can make a difference, and I appreciate your time.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak regarding this matter? Anyone else who'd like to speak regarding this matter? Yes, last one. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak regarding this matter? Hearing none, I'll close the public hearing on the proposed FY21-22 budget. Just so the audience knows, we will not adopt a budget for seven days. So we will look at the budget. We have a meeting on the twentieth to consider the budget. Next on the agenda for a public hearing, you're welcome, Ms. Thomas, is the county administrator's proposed, I'm sorry, the proposed fiscal year 2022, 2026 capital improvement program.
All right. This is obviously not as long as the budget because it's not as many numbers. You're going full screen. Cut it on the little screen, not the big one. There we go. For the FY22 to 2026 five-year CIP, the total infrastructure requests were seventy-five million, four hundred and seventy-four thousand, eight hundred and ninety-seven dollars. The county recommended infrastructure for that period is forty-five million, nine hundred and twenty-three thousand dollars. For FY22, just the infrastructure request alone was seven million, forty-four thousand, eight hundred and ninety-seven dollars. FY22 county administrator infrastructure recommend is five hundred and seventeen thousand dollars. The total request for equipment and transportation for the five-year CIP was nine million, nine hundred and seventy-two thousand, nine hundred and forty-seven dollars. And the total recommended by the county administrator for that five-year period is five million, seven hundred and sixty-three thousand, four hundred and four dollars. For FY22, the equipment transportation request is two million, three hundred and thirty-six thousand, two hundred and ninety-five dollars, and the county administrator recommendation for that is one million, nine hundred and twenty-three thousand, three hundred and eighty-four Vehicles and equipment on the county side. Sheriff and police vehicles, two hundred and thirty-one thousand, three hundred and forty dollars, and that's proposed to be financed. Fire and rescue vehicles, nine hundred and sixty thousand dollars, also proposed to be financed. That would be an engine two replacement at five hundred and ninety-five thousand, brush six at ninety-five thousand, ambulance twenty-seven at two hundred and twenty thousand dollars. Battalion chief slash captain response vehicle with us a replacement, fifty thousand dollars. Infrastructure on the county and utilities, a new parking lot next to this building, CCCSC, at a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, and that's proposed out of the Caroline Detention Facility Funds. And then water supply, well development, two hundred thousand dollars, and that's financed. So the county and utility CIP fund and transfer from the detention center fund, a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, lease purchase, one million, three hundred and forty-one thousand dollars. Total revenue for the county CIP fund, one million, five hundred and forty-one thousand dollars. Infrastructure, schools, building automation upgrades, one hundred thousand dollars, proposed out of reversion funds. CSH facility upgrade, sixty-seven thousand, proposed out of reversion funds for a subtotal of infrastructure, one hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollars. Vehicles and equipment, schools, classroom technology, fifty thousand dollars, reversion funds. Staff computers, fifty thousand dollars, reversion funds. Network switches, UPSs, and VoIP phone equipment, forty-six thousand dollars, reversion funds. Special needs bus, one hundred and twelve thousand and forty-four dollars, that's a general fund transfer, as you saw earlier in the regular budget. Full replacement buses, four hundred and twenty-four thousand, six hundred and forty-five dollars, that's a general fund transfer to the school CIP as well. Maintenance and student transportation vehicles, fifty thousand dollars, that's a lease for a subtotal of vehicles and equipment of seven hundred and thirty-two thousand, six hundred and eighty-nine... I mean, six hundred and eighty-nine dollars. So the school CIP funding sources, transfer from the general fund to the school CIP fund, five hundred and thirty-six thousand, six hundred and eighty-nine dollars. Transfer from the reversion funds to the school CIP, three hundred and thirteen thousand dollars. Lease purchase, fifty thousand dollars, for a total revenue to school CIP fund of eight hundred and ninety-nine thousand, six hundred and eighty-nine dollars. And special thanks for their help in preparation of the FY22-26 CIP budget go to the members of the Caroline County Planning Commission, Mike Fincham, Director of Planning and Community Development, Lisa Zek, Administrative Assistant Planning Technician, Tamika Smith, Director of Finance, and Alan Parton, Deputy County Administrator. And with that, that short presentation, I am finished.
Thank you, Mr....
Questions?
Thank you, Mr. Cully.
What happened to the million dollars in reversion money that we appropriated for schools? That's not in this budget, or that goes...
No, you've already appropriated that, so I said twenty-one.
Twenty-one.
Twenty-one. You haven't put any more money into twenty-two.
No, that's...
This is what we appropriated from reversion funds, one point two.
Yeah.
Right. All right, let me go ahead. I'd like to open up the public hearing for the proposed fiscal year 2226 through 26 capital improvement program. Is there anyone who would like to speak regarding this matter? Is there anyone who would like to speak regarding this matter? Is there anyone who would like to speak regarding this matter? You can come. Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I do have a list. Mr. Frank Beal. No, no, wrong list. Mr. Doug Allison, I'm sorry.
Go on, Coach.
Yeah. Sorry about that, Coach.
No worries. Thank you again, gentlemen. I'm not sure if my players would agree, but I'm pretty sure my students would love it if I had a three-minute counter and that was all I was allowed to talk. So I thought I'd sign up twice. No, I imagine... all I was allowed to talk. So I thought I'd sign up twice. No, I'm actually signing up because I do have a lot of hats, just like you do. And I appreciate your service, and I know what it means to be a public servant. And I do strive for excellence, and it wouldn't be appropriate not to try and fight for everything I can give my players. Our vision for Caroline High School football is we are recognized as the best program in central Virginia. Our mission statement that we're going to pursue excellence in football to teach young men and women how to be excellent in life. And our core values of grind, respect, integrity, and toughness, we take very seriously. Finally, we build all of this around the idea of what we call Hoka He. Hoka He is a Sioux Indian term that basically, to sum it up, means it's a good day to die. We don't mean that literally. We don't want our kids dying. What we mean is it's a day for our selfish desires to die. The self dies so that the team can live. We've heard everyone in this community loves Caroline, and there should be no factions that are going against each other or anything. We gotta be like Stephen Covey and come up with win-win. You know, I don't know what win-win looks like, but it's got to happen. We need great sheriffs, deputies, and we need great teachers. And what I do know is that the committee, the Capital Improvement Committee unanimously supported the idea of using some windfall money to better the athletic facilities at Caroline. And I think that would be a fantastic idea. We spent tens of thousands of dollars fixing bathrooms, and we didn't get to play home games this year because our field was horrible. All of our home games, but one for the football team, were played in a neighboring county that has now given all of its schools top-notch fields. Now, I would love to have a football field. What would you expect on the football coach? But we need an athletic facility for the wrestling team. I really, truly believe a rising tide lifts all ships, and I want to see whatever it takes to make our student athletes the best. See, I have a vision, not just about Caroline football, but Caroline County. And I believe, I gave you empirical evidence last time, this is anecdotal evidence, but anecdotally, I believe that if you have a great football team, your community has pride. When you have a one high school county and that football team is rocking it on Friday nights, everyone's loving to go get ice cream after the game. I see that happening here, and I'd ask you to please consider putting the funds in behind the capital improvements to improve the facilities. We would have more kids playing that live in the county. We'd have less kids leave to go play at other counties, which has happened, seeing in my three years here. These kids would stay. They'd become great. Our county would become great. Win-win, whatever it takes. I appreciate your time tonight, Hoka He.
Coach, thank you. Coach. Josh Just. Followed by Stan Sweater, I believe. S W E T R. Josh Just, are you? Oh, all right. Principal Just, I got you.
I wanted to thank you first for the opportunity to speak. Yeah, my first name isn't Principal, but I think a lot of people think it is. But I am without a doubt the proud and very excited principal of Caroline High School. I love serving that community, the students, the staff, the parents. I enjoy my role a whole lot. What I want to talk to you today about is the two CIP projects that we brought up for the high school, which are the field turf field, obviously to serve not just football, but a lot of different programs at Caroline High School, and also the multipurpose facility that wrestling and cheer and different groups can be a part of it. I'm not going to bring them up. Obviously, they would benefit our programs in a variety of ways, but that's not what I want to talk to you about. You know, we talk about vision for the entire county. That's where I think there's benefit here. When you're talking about a field turf in the stadium, that's not going to just benefit our students. That's also going to benefit the entire county. So you now talk about serving the youth programs you already have through Parks and Rec, like football and soccer, and building a youth program for field hockey, having competition banned there for youth programs, not to mention just the high school programs and the middle school programs. That is a great opportunity there. You could also use that field turf facility when you're talking about competitions that you can have, having a youth soccer competition, having a youth football competition, or whatever you want to talk about. You're now bringing business and consumers to the county. I could tell you going to Delaware for a youth field hockey program, how much I spent on food alone in one weekend. Now imagine that money going to our businesses around Caroline County. You know, there's benefit there. We talk about the multipurpose facility. With that multipurpose facility, yes, wrestling would benefit, cheer would benefit, maybe a youth gymnastics program would come of that. Maybe we have different programs for youth wrestling, for youth cheer. And I ought to mention the Title IX implications to have our girls softball team be able to use that in bad weather, just like our baseball team can use the annex over there. So there's a lot of different variety of reasons we could use that. But not only that, our sheriff's department could use it for different trainings. We can open that facility to serve the entire county. And the last thing I want to leave you with is, in my time as a coach, administrator, principal, I've seen a lot of people come into schools when they're looking to move to Richmond or Fredericksburg, and they're looking at the best place to live for their kids. They're coming, they're doing their research, and they do look at facilities. And if the facilities are not what they want, then they're not going to move into that district. What I want for us is to have the best facilities so people move here and see what a great opportunity it is. That way, we're bringing in more people to our county, more taxpayers, more people paying different amounts at our businesses. I really do appreciate your time. Thank you and have a great night.
Thank you. Stan Swanton, I believe, followed by James Tesado. Your voting district, please.
Reedie Church.
Reedie Church, thank you.
A little closer to the mic. Coach Swan or Steve Swan. I'm the head wrestling coach for the high school. I just wanted to come before you. I've emailed every one of you before. I know you've seen my emails. I just wanted to publicly come out and ask for your support of the CIP request for the high school. We built a successful program. We can only grow, and we can't grow much more because of the space that we have. We want youth wrestling, but there's no space for youth wrestling. We want clubs, but there's no space for clubs. We've done as much as we pretty much can with what we have. So I'm just asking for the support of the CIP request for the school system. Thank you.
Thank you, Coach. James Tesado, followed by Sharon Swanton.
Good evening, Chairman Underwood and Vice Chairman Black and members of the board. My name is James Tesado. I'm a wrestler and a senior at Caroline High School. I became the first in Caroline history to win a regional championship, reach the century mark, win a state championship in the sport of wrestling, and be selected as the Freelance Star Wrestler of the Year. Overall, I have had a record of 125 to 11. I'm a two-time regional champion, four-time regional finalist, four-time state place winner, three-time state finalist, and 2021 state champion. I am currently ranked number one in the entire state, and I'm thankful to my coaches, my principal, my athletic director for allowing winter sports to happen this season. First and foremost, I would like to say thank you for this opportunity. Secondly, I would like to express my disappointment to the board. I know when I step on that mat to wrestle, it is going to be a dogfight, but why does it have to be that way to gain support from the board? I have been in many other wrestling rooms, including but not limited to the trailer we have behind the school, Hannover Hawkeye, the club I wrestle with, Atlee, River Ben, Robinson, Spotsylvania, Cortland, and College Wrestling Rooms. I know you all are most likely tired of hearing it, but the wrestling room we have at the high school is insufficient and is deserving of a space that can accommodate the 31st circle that holds my passion. I will admit how spoiled of an individual I am. My parents drive me everywhere, they take me and pay for my practices. My coaches support me on my decisions and are willing to do anything for me, all of this without me having to walk one job. I've been blessed with the experience and the opportunities of a lifetime. I acknowledge the fact that many kids within the county can't afford to spend the same amount of money or time that my family and I have put into the sport. Having a wrestling facility within the county would help others who aspire to wrestle to do what I have been able to do, or even do more. The room is not just for me, but for the future of Caroline wrestling. I know I am just the start, but by no means am I the end. Thank you for listening and your time this evening. I hope the board will consider the Planning Commission's recommendation and move forward with the CIP request from the schools.
Thank you, Jen. Sharon Swanton, followed by Brianna Sale.
Good evening, board. I'm back now as I'm gonna take off my teacher hat and I'm gonna put on my coach hat. So I am the middle school boys and girls soccer team coach, and I am also the middle school wrestling coach. I want you to understand with the CIP request for a wrestling slash multipurpose room, how much that would impact the middle school sports teams. So at the middle school, we don't even have a field to practice on for soccer. We go to the Parks and Recs field. So if there's weather, if the Park and Rec directors deem that we can't use the field, then I'm out of luck unless I do indoor in the gym. With wrestling, because wrestling is a winter sport, we get a lot of new kids that are brand new to it. So with wrestling, we actually have to share the gym with basketball. And by sharing the gym with basketball, I am relegated to the back of the gym. I can't even put out a full mat. We're trying to teach children who are brand new to this sport and want to try something new. And if there's a basketball game, I'm out of luck. I got nowhere to go. So by improving the facilities in this county, you are going to be able to affect 100% of the students that are here. A multipurpose facility will make it possible for the middle school teams to also have a practice space if it's necessary. My daughter played softball and field hockey. It would have been lovely on a rainy day for her to be able to have somewhere to go. There were times where I picked her up at the high school and they had practice in the hallway of the high school. My oldest son is a wrestler, a soccer player, and a football player. And he has dealt with the same things, rainy days, what do you do? Soccer, sometimes being on the chats for high school soccer, Coach White will go, guys, it's a rainy day. I can send you a workout. I can, we can maybe practice in the parking lot. How can you grow athletes? How can you tell athletes that they are worthy of our time and worthy of the things we're providing them when we can't even provide them space? Lastly, for wrestling, that is my heart. And it's my heart because it's what my husband does, it's what my boys do, and I love it. Being in the trailer, I have been over there in that trailer. I have watched my husband apologize to parents of kids who get concussions because the trailer is just not adequate. We even went to the YMCA, but now you run into an equity issue. We have kids who can't get there for practice because they don't have a ride. So now you're putting them in a position where they can't do the sport. A comment was made that, well, you could just do scheduling. Okay, so do you tell the high school basketball teams, well, every other week you have to have practice later? Now it's an equity issue for their players. Now what if they do if they can't get a ride because they rely on activity buses and things like that? You have the chance to affect 100% of the children in this county, and I truly believe they are worthy of greatness. And when you improve things, just like Coach Allison said, you're going to see a rise in all of the programs. That facility will help cheerleading, wrestling, middle school sports. It will give us places to do things, and it will help us create, for me at the middle school, players who are ready for high school when they get there. Thank you for your time, and I ask that you please fund this. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Swanton. Brianna Sales, followed by Jonathan Rollins.
Hello. I'm a wrestler at Caroline High School, and I've wrestled ever since sixth grade. And, sorry, I'm nervous. But I think that the wrestling team would really benefit from having a proper place to practice because it can get a little annoying with, you know, the basketball team within the middle school and where they practice. And, you know, sometimes if they have a game, we would even have to move into the cafeteria. So it's really complicated, not, well, this is really just frustrating for everybody to have to, you know, uproot everything that we're doing for someone else, I guess, you know. And also with the trailer, it's just the trailer. The trailer. We love it, but at the same time, it's like, wow, I guess. I don't know. Wrestling is a really, really good sport. I love it, and I would like to see everybody else, you know, benefit from, I don't know, something better. I don't... Yeah, that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Brianna. Good job. Jonathan Rollins. Followed by Brian, is it Wiles? Sale, S A L E.
Good morning, board, or good evening, board. I'm Jonathan Rollins. I'm in the Mattapani District. I do wear many hats like everybody else here. I know Mr. Hyzer personally is tired of me when I put my hat on as the sports director for the Frederick Burke Fieldhouse, where I run 26 youth programs. When I put on my coaching hat, I am a travel soccer coach, a middle school soccer coach, and a high school soccer coach. I've been coaching travel soccer for 12 years. I've won three state titles, two region one titles. I've been to back-to-back national final fours, where I finished third in the nation. I'm a middle school coach that won the first championship for my middle school in Spotsylvania. I have been a high school coach. I was the first coach in the Battlefield District to have a turf field. I was the King George Girls Soccer Coach. I'm the first coach to play on a turf field here. I saw the drastic difference when we took the kids from the pit, put them on a turf field, and were able to train them on a top flight facility. I went to Chancer. The kids begged me to come to Caroline. I'm a graduate from Caroline. I graduated in the year 2000. Being a coach for the last four years, looking back at the training that I have to do with these kids, looking at the facility hasn't changed in 21 years since I graduated. I was able to put a girl in two years ago, first kid from either boy or girl program, into the state All-Star Team game. That's the top talent from everywhere in the state. I put a kid from Caroline. Got kids that I've put into college. I put 17 girls in the D1 schools. I've coached over 600 players. All I'm asking is you guys really consider not being the last person in the district to get a quality facility for the kids. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rollins. Brian, is it Wiles? White, okay, W Y. Okay. Followed by Sam Perkins. And it's W H Y.
Yeah, it's just White with a Y. Good evening. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak to you guys tonight. I'm Brian White. I'm entering my sixth year as the head coach of the soccer program.
Mr. White, your voting district?
Oh, my voting district is Port Royal.
Port Royal, thank you.
I stand before you guys tonight to ask that you strongly consider the proposal to upgrade the Caroline High School Stadium with field turf and to prioritize it into the budget. I'll start by saying that whether you're a fan of sports or not, there's much that children can learn from sports that will help them be successful as they journey beyond high school. For some, it might be a learning, learning that exercise is a pillar to long-term good physical and mental health. For others, it might be learning about the importance of commitment and discipline, practicing good sportsmanship, working as a team, or just learning that the world is a competitive place that requires hard work to get what you want. Along with academics, sports can teach and help instill tools in our kids that will help these children to be successful in their adult lives. I do not want to take away from the importance of academics, as they are of the utmost importance, but sports and other extracurricular activities help create well-rounded and balanced young adults and can create bridges to the classroom, motivate kids to do better academically. We need good field surfaces to practice and play on. The Caroline High School athletic fields are long overdue for a refresh, but the best place to start is by replacing the grass in the Caroline Stadium with turf. Everyone knows the saying, practice makes perfect. And our practice fields have never been in satisfactory condition to practice a sport in which the ball stays on the ground most of the time, or sports where an athlete must trust their footing on a surface as they focus only on catching the ball. We may not have the budget to upgrade all of our practice surfaces, but if we upgrade our game field to a durable surface, it can be used for games, practice, and for county parks and recreation sports to use in all safe weather conditions. Currently, the practice field behind the school where the soccer and football are supposed to practice is uphill at one end, is full of ruts, bumps, cracks, and grooves. You can imagine what it would be like chasing a football in that field without being able to look at the ground. Whether you're a coach or not, it's well-known that practice is what allows for sports teams to improve. If teams don't have satisfactory and reliable surface to use day in and day out and through all safe weather, our programs simply cannot improve any more than they already have. We have peaked in soccer, and until we improve our fields and get our kids playing at a higher level before joining the high school team, we'll always be playing catch-up. Having competitive sports teams in the county can build... Having competitive sports teams in the county can build a lot of pride in the community. We all want the Caroline kids to enter the adult world with confidence in their abilities, not feel like they're, they don't measure up because the teams in other counties have made us feel like they're better. By putting our kids at a disadvantage as compared to peers at other schools in terms of fields, we are not doing our best to give our kids a chance to succeed. At the risk of sounding like a broken record, upgrading our game field to a turf field would allow us to use it for daily practices, rain or shine, and would kill two birds, one stone. It is a fact that turf holds up far better than grass and can be practiced, played on in all weather. So for now, it seems like the most cost-effective way to remedy our practice and game field disadvantage is to upgrade our stadium field to turf so that it can be used for both. Everyone loves an underdog story, and it'd be amazing for our children to overcome these disadvantages and defeat the competition despite the less-than-optimal playing surfaces. But even the best coaches in the world cannot improve a team when the teams they play against have such a huge advantage brought on by practicing daily on a quality surface.
Mr. White, 30 seconds, please.
Sure. This is a great and beautiful county. We need to do better and have our stadium reflect the beauty of our county. Turf is the best and most cost-effective option moving forward. Just about every other high school in the district is transitioning to turf, and I think we should follow suit or be left behind even further. Sadly, even the other schools in Spotsylvania County has transitioned to turf. Their grass fields reflect that they have a golf course and were already suitable surfaces. Our sports teams have been at a huge disadvantage for years, and it's no surprise that the record of wins and losses for our sports teams reflects those disadvantages. It's heartbreaking when kids come into a sports program already expecting to lose big because their brothers and sisters before them did not have success. I think we all want this to change, and a new field will start us moving in the right direction. We have great athletes in the county, but these fields are holding us back, and lackluster facilities may even be dissuading parents from enrolling their children in sports in our county in general. Let's upgrade our stadium to turf and to take the first step towards improving our sports program and bringing sports pride back to Caroline. Let's create a place where we can improve our sports team and gather to cheer on our competitive Caroline Cavaliers.
Thank you, Mr. White. Samuel Perkins.
Thank you again, members of the Board, for your time this evening. Samuel Perkins, Western Caroline District. I'd like to talk to you specifically about, obviously, the CCPS ask for the CIP funds and the full funding for those items with the turf field and the wrestling multi-facility. I'm also a coach at the high school. Little people, I don't think a lot of my colleagues know this, but I am the head coach of the esports program at the high school, which, to get into very little detail, that is video games essentially. But video games is becoming a very competitive area, and a lot of kids are interested in it, right? And it's another area where we can show our students, right, that they, that we care about their interests. And so showing, being able to pay for these facilities, right, this new facility, a wrestling facility, and be able to pay for turf fields shows not only those athletes, but also my athletes and other athletes that aren't just, you know, physical athletes, but scholarly or mental athletes as well, that we care about them, and we care about the things that they care about, the things that intrigue them, the things that are important to them at this time in their life. Especially in this past year, we've seen such a rise in cases of depression and sadness throughout not only the nation, but even here in the county. You heard earlier with Ms. Carter talking about those behavior specialists, it's so necessary here in this county. But also, these sports outlets are necessary for the students as well to bring not only pride into our county, but also happiness as well. It's an area where our communities can gather, where we can uplift each other. It's a place where we can feel together and come together as one Caroline. I know that if we put the money towards these facilities, that it will help not only those who are here now, but those who have come before me, as you have heard from some other alumni this evening as well, that we're willing to come and also help put in that time and effort to be able to make this place, this wonderful county, an even more wonderful county, and bring even more pride into it, and bring the right kind of pride into it. A place where we can come together as a community. And so I plead and I ask that you please appropriate the funds to be able to support these projects in these next five years so that we can have a place where we can come together. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Perkins. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak regarding the proposed 22-26 capital improvement program? Is there anyone else who'd like to speak? Seeing none, public hearing is now closed. Our final public hearing tonight is the consideration of adoption of a resolution authorizing the acquisition of, for public purposes, by purchase or condemnation of real estate owned by Jennifer McAllister and Matthew Laken or their successors. Mr. Cully or Mr. Fincham?
Mr. Chairman, members of the Board, your last public hearing tonight is a public hearing to consider adopting a resolution for the purposes, public purposes of purchase or condemnation of real property owned by Jennifer L. McAllister and Matthew Laken or their successors and his sons, which is Tax Map Number 74-A-114. As the Board is aware, the county has been working on trying to locate and acquire property down in the Sparta area for the relocation of the Sparta Fire Station. Current fire station is located in a hundred-year floodplain and has flooded, I believe it's about four times in the last 20 years. And the county just recently completed improvements to that facility to floodproof that structure from the most recent flood that occurred last year. Recognizing the location of the property, the volunteers actually went out and acquired some property outside of the hundred-year floodplain from some of the neighboring property owners in the Sparta area. And as you will recall, the county started evaluating that property, and ultimately it was determined that there were a number of liens and other physical characteristics that rendered that property extremely expensive to try to build a station on. The staff was directed to go back and to identify other potential station locations for the relocation of the facility. County actually did a facility analysis about 15 years ago where public work staff was tasked with identifying potential station sites in Sparta. And staff dusted off the old study, looked at properties there, and looked at some other properties in the area, and identified several potential sites for consideration. The county also received a proposal from a landowner in the area for, to discuss a potential station site in proximity to the Salem Baptist Church. So in all, we were looking at about four sites for the potential relocation of the station. At the end of the analysis, the county actually identified a parcel identified as Tax Map 74-A-114, which contained about 22 acres of land as its preferred location for a station. And the county contacted the property owners who indicated that they were willing to sell the property to the county. Unfortunately, after making a purchase offer to the applicants, another prospective purchaser stepped in and made an offer to the, to the owners of the property, which was accepted by the owners, which led to the Board's decision to hold a public hearing tonight related to the potential acquisition and, if necessary, condemnation of all or a portion of that same property for purposes of constructing the Sparta Fire Station. I would remind the Board and the public that this is the first step. In such a process, it is not an indication that condemnation of property is necessary, but in fact, would be the last step that the Board of Supervisors would potentially take if and when it ultimately got to that point.
Thank you, Mr. Fincham.
And at the appropriate time, Mr. Chairman, I do have a couple of letters to read.
Let me open up the public hearing, and then I will have you read those two. If you want to stay, that's fine. The public hearing regarding the consideration of adoption of the resolution authorizing the acquisition for public purpose, the purchase or condemnation of real estate owned by Jennifer L. McAllister and Matthew Laken or their successors is now open. Mr. Fincham, if you would read those two letters first.
Mr. Chairman, members of the Board, your first letter is a letter we received from Matthew Laken. Says, "Mr. Cully, on behalf of the estate of Thomas R. Laken, we strongly oppose this action. First, we understand the county's draft resolution authorizing the acquisition for public purposes by purchase or condemnation of real property on Tax Map 74-A-114 states that the county believes it is necessary to acquire Tax Map Number 74-A-114 for the relocation of the fire station. We are aware that the volunteers associated with the fire department have already purchased similar property located only a short distance away on Sparta Road, which contains a sign indicating that it is the future home of the Sparta Fire Department. If the Sparta Fire Department already owns land intended to be used as its future home, we do not understand the county's basis for arguing that it is necessary to purchase Tax Map Number 74-A-114 for the same purpose. Second, we write to notify the Caroline County Board of Supervisors that the estate is currently under contract with a buyer to purchase the land contained in Tax Map Number 74-A-114. As you know, the Caroline County Board of Supervisors made an offer on the land a short time ago, but the county's offer was not competitive with the other offer the estate received from the buyer that is now under contract to purchase the land. The estate encouraged Caroline County Board of Supervisors to make a competitive counter offer, but heard nothing in response from the county until the letter the estate received yesterday, which notified us of the county's intention to condemn Tax Map Number 74-A-114. We see no basis for the county to condemn Tax Map Number 74-A-114. In addition, as administrators of the estate, we must fulfill our fiduciary responsibilities and intend to proceed with the sale to the buyer with the most competitive offer. For these reasons, we strongly encourage the Board of Supervisors to reconsider and rescind their proposed action. Sincerely, Matthew Laken, Voting District, Washington, DC, Ward 22807."
Second letter, Mr. Fincham, and give me, give me the name of the person that sent the letter first.
Second letter is from Mary Margaret M. Pitts, 14-3.
Mary Margaret Pitts.
Mary Margaret M. Pitts.
Yes.
Milford, Virginia, Magisterial, Mattapanai District. "It is with the utmost respect to the Caroline County Board of Supervisors that I ask for your reconsideration of the possible condemnation of Tax Map Number 74-A-114, 22.39 acres of raw land located in Sparta, Virginia. The Virginia Code Section you quote, Section 15.2-1903, states that condemnation proceedings may be instituted when, one, the locality and owner cannot agree on the compensation to be paid or other terms of purchase or settlement; two, the owner is legally incapacitated; three, either the owner or his whereabouts is unknown; or four, the owner is unable to convey valid title to the property. Please advise the citizens that you represent, how many negotiations you've had with the owner or contract owners? How many all-cash offers with no contingencies have you made to acquire this property before resorting to a condemnation, which may or may not be necessary and which will cost the taxpayers potentially more than any difference in price? What about the volunteers that serve the Sparta Fire Department? Their time and effort to purchase and maintain the land they already own, have they been consulted to see if this is what they desire? The volunteers, at every time that the tones go off, drop whatever they're doing to serve their neighbors. Shouldn't they get a say-so? We have multiple generations putting their lives on the line to serve this community. Shouldn't they get a vote? I respectfully appreciate your reconsideration of this matter. Mary Margaret M. Pitts, Mattapanai Magisterial District."
Thank you, Mr. Fincham. Mr. Frank Beal.
Mr. Chairman, members of the Board, my name is Frank Beal, and I reside in the Bowling District. As a lifelong resident of Caroline County, specifically the Sparta community, I have serious concerns about the resolution regarding the acquisition of a land for the new Sparta Volunteer Fire Company Fire Station. The current fire station sits on less than one acre of land, and the volunteers have used it to serve the community well for decades. There have obviously been ongoing issues with the current location that makes it necessary to seek a new location. The volunteers did a great job over 20 years ago purchasing a piece of property and subsequently jumping through numerous obstacles that the county presented. Ultimately, it is now my understanding that slightly, excuse me, ultimately, it is now my understanding that the slightly over-four-acre parcel of land that has been bearing the sign stating "future home of Sparta Volunteer Fire Department" is no longer suitable, according to the county. I'm not sure why this has taken the county 20-plus years to come to that conclusion, and now the citizens of the county are seeing a proposed resolution to exercise eminent domain on a different parcel of land. It is my understanding that for eminent domain to be executed, all other options must have been exhausted. I do not feel that this is the case here. If the site that was secured 20 years ago needed modifications or had title and deed issues that needed to be resolved, and the county was not getting the needed cooperation, and if eminent domain actions are indeed the only negotiating tactics the county has, why was it not used on that original site? According to the proposed resolution, the parcel of land the county is pursuing is over 22 acres. I fail to understand how a new fire station would need, would be in need of 22-plus acres when it currently sits on less than one. I understand the need for a larger site to operate well, but I feel the proposed site is excessive. The average size of fire stations throughout the county is less than three acres. It would seem that the county could spend a lot less taxpayer money by modifying the currently-owned new site, or if it truly is not a viable location, at least explore the other sites that have been offered as possible locations. I have personally talked to multiple members of the community who have been a part of the new fire station process over the years or will be impacted by this proposed resolution. It is interesting that in the past, when issues that affect the Sparta community, such as the Verizon cell tower and the need for broadband in the Sparta area, we've had multiple community meetings to inform and hear feedback from the community. However, in the case of the new fire station, there has been no attempt that I'm aware of to communicate in the same fashion. It appears that the county is simply trying to come down with a heavy hand and exercise their power rather than fully explore their options and follow due process. I respectfully ask that each of you carefully consider how you look on this issue. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Beal. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak regarding this matter? Is there anyone else who'd like to speak regarding this matter? Please state your name and your district, sir.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Vice Chairman, and board members and citizens of Carolina County. I'm Steve Law from the Bowling Green Voting District. I represent the contract purchaser through an LLC of the twenty-two acres that have been advertised for condemnation. To my knowledge, no appraisal or offer has been made, no explanation of the rationale has been given to me for why the county would need twenty-two acres to build a fire station in downtown Sparta. I also have an ownership interest in the land that the county has looked at at another acceptable site, and I believe that in many cases, your officials have said that that is an acceptable site. I'm very saddened that tonight we're at a public hearing for eminent domain in a county like Carolina that I love and that I've been in for fifty years come May fourth of next, oh, May fourth of this year. I've always thought that eminent domain was the last resort when a buyer and seller had negotiated their hearts out and couldn't go any further. We're not there yet, folks. It's clear to me that many of you don't know all the facts, or at least that's my understanding, and I believe, first off, that we did submit an offer to the Laken-McAllister group through the estate long before the county did. I hope you understand that this was not an offer just because the county wanted the land. I bought the land across the road from it months ago, and I bought other land a year ago in that general area. Why shouldn't a seller be able to get the maximum price, especially when they're in a fiduciary capacity, as Matt's letter mentioned? Secondly, there isn't an alternative site, and there are many other sites, but the alternative site that I have proposed to the county, and I have met with county officials on the site, and I have heard very positive comments from county officials that it is a very good site. Your board packet, number three, and resolutions state that adoption of the proposed resolution does not preclude the continuation of negotiations. Well, first, we have not had any negotiations, and secondly, if you say you're going to condemn, it's very difficult for the other side to in fact negotiate, because you've already said you're going to take it. It's like, we're going to negotiate, but you're going to win. I think it should happen as a last resort after negotiations have failed, and I don't think they will. And four, I've been told by the county that the county is interested in multiple sites, and then I've been told that this is the only site that this site and this fire station can possibly be built on. So I think the county needs to flush out whether in fact this is the only site within a reasonable radius of the village that's suitable, or whether there are other sites that are available. I do not believe the twenty acre site is the only site on the planet that it can rest on. There are many sites that will work, and I do not believe it is wise to harshly push eminent domain at this point just because the county was unsuccessful on a contract offer. As you all know, it's a very hot real estate market there, and I don't know of a Sparta property that is sold at list price in recent times. Please carefully consider this resolution and defer it until you have had negotiations. I would respectfully request that. I appreciate your service to the county, and I have certainly enjoyed my fifty years of residency in Sparta. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Law. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak regarding this matter? Is there anyone else who'd like to speak regarding this matter? Hearing none, the public hearing is closed. Board members, how do we wish to move forward? Any discussion? The resolution is in your board packet. Do you have any questions you want to go?
Well, the resolution clearly says that we have to negotiate, and we all listened to our counsel on that. So the ability to negotiate is the first step in the condemnation process. So it's not just condemn or take, and it's negotiation. We've all heard what has been told to us by legal counsel, and I think at this point, we've waited a long time to begin a Sparta fire station. We have multiple problems, and we're moving into hurricane season again. We should have been well underway for stormwater management, which we all know is going to take, at least according to the building official, four to six months to clear that hurdle. So time is of the essence to move forward, and we've already borrowed the money for the station.
Thank you, Mr. Sealy. Mr. Forehand, you have any comments regarding this, or?
No, I do have some questions to staff that I'll ask.
Mr. Fincham, you want to come?
No, I can ask that there's random, off the head questions I can just ask.
Mr. Underwood, I don't think we're going to make a decision on this tonight because we were hoping to speak with a couple of other people. We just had to have the public hearing.
Right.
Well, no, we, according to Ben, we need to move forward so that we can actually start negotiation.
Well, then why isn't he here tonight? Because we're supposed to have a...
He's online.
So are we going to have the closed session or not? We're not?
Yes.
Something different?
Nothing to do with this.
Yeah, it was no closed session planned for this.
Okay.
Yeah, this is, was ready for your action if you're ready to take it. We discussed all this before.
I know, a little confused. Mr. Thomas? I wanted to ask you a question because it was, I kind of knew there's other sites other than the one that the Sparta Fire Department had.
We had, we had a study that was done years ago in a number of sites, and we sent letters just recently to six property owners. I can't remember how the letters I signed.
Mr. Thomas, I advised Mr. Law that we were looking at several sites down in the area.
You advised him?
Yes.
I mean, not that all of the board was that involved in the project, but what other sites was he talking about that came to the county? He said one near the church. What happened to that site? That wasn't a valid site?
That is a site that Mr. Law is a member of the LLC that owns property adjacent to the church. We did look at that site. We, there were some letters back and forth between the county and the applicant. I met Mr. Law and Mr. Watts on site, discussed their vision for the potential future, future use of that property. Their location-wise, it is a good location. It's off of six thirty-nine. There were some potential additional issues related to road construction that potentially increased the price, but yes, it is a viable site, as well as the other three sites that we had identified down there.
But he said that's like, I just didn't recall.
Yeah, yeah, I think.
Maybe we didn't have all the information if they put in a bid, and then we thought they were selling to us and something like that.
I'm not sure of the full process, but I know it's just been...
Yeah, and that's all I'm trying to make sure we understand and do the right thing. I guess you can still do different things in parallel.
Yes, sir.
Even though you're doing this process.
Right.
Yes, sir.
Put it says in the resolution that we can continue to move forward and have conversation.
So theoretically, and I'm just trying to make sure I understand, theoretically, we approve this resolution, you negotiate with the landowner for that particular site, but if another site is deemed to be as good or better, you can go with that other site. Because at any point in time, we could stop the condemnation process, right?
Yes, and again, the condemnation is the last resort.
So you're, so you're saying that we're going to, I'm just putting words in your mouth again, I guess I haven't done it, make sure that we continue to negotiate regarding the property, and we would use the condemnation source as a last resort? Should we not be able to come to agreement, or we decide to pull away completely and look for another site? Is that process we're looking at right now?
I think all those options are open to the board, Mr. Underwood.
I just want to get an understanding of process. So we are here now looking for approval of a resolution for condemnation. At the same time, if we do so, we're going to continue to negotiate regarding the property. We're also going to continue to look at other properties, or are we not?
Not until this...
Okay, so we're not going, so we're going to have just two tracks, condemnation and communication regarding negotiation, I mean.
It's all for the same piece of property.
Right, same piece of property, right. But I'm saying, those are the two tracks that we are discussing tonight regarding the resolution, and that's our proposed action going forward, correct?
Right. But that's...
Well, my question, thank you, Mr. Thomas, is that it's how many acres? It's not the whole track, it's a portion. Isn't that what it says?
Right. It was advertised for twenty-two, which is what the county made its contract, its purchase offer on the entire twenty-two acres. We do not need the twenty-two acres just for a fire station. We could get by with something less than that. I think at the end of the day, we end up acquiring only what we need for the fire station unless we identify some other use down there, and the contract owner or owner is willing to sell us the whole piece.
That's what I want to make sure I understand.
Fincham, let me make sure I understand. So the condemnation is for the full twenty-two, just for the smaller parcel that we believe we want to put the fire station on, correct?
What was advertised was the entire twenty-two acres.
Correct.
Which is what we brought to the board.
At the meet, right.
Previously.
Yes.
And that's what I want to make sure we all understand. Someone has put in a bid or a contract to buy twenty-two acres. Now, we're going to, we're going to take five acres from that twenty-two if the negotiation to sell it doesn't come through. But the same person who has the contract to buy that twenty-two acres also has other land.
Right.
So I'm imagining that same person would say, "I like my twenty-two acre tract. Here's another tract I have, three, four, whatever acres you may want."
So I guess, right, so I guess the question...
But the question, the point at this point is, this is the tract that's been identified, the fire chief's been at it, the chief of the Sparta Fire Station, they've all been consulted about it.
I'm just saying, if I could finish, I'm just saying, as part of the negotiation, if I were him negotiating, I would bring that up, and me as a board member...
It comes with other issues.
Excuse me?
It comes with other issues. That's why we've moved.
I'm, so I just want to make sure everybody understands, if you're negotiating with a guy who owns more than one property...
And we would bring that back to you. If you adopt this resolution, we'll go to an offer on the property we want. If we get something that's a counterback to that offer, we'll come back to the board to decide if this is, so we're not locked into anything.
Okay.
But we have to move forward with...
I'm done. So, so, so let me, yeah, we'll get to Ben in a minute. So let me understand, the, we condemned the smaller parcel for the firehouse. What does that limit the twenty-two parcel?
The smaller parcel would come off the twenty-two.
Come off the twenty-two.
And it would remain in the same zone that it currently has.
But what limitations would the purchaser of that addition, the other parcel, minus the, whatever we decide to condemn, what limitations would they now have?
It wouldn't be able to split it.
What's that?
It wouldn't be able to split it.
So before, right.
Because it's ten acres on it.
Right, so that's...
Ten acres, so it's two buildable lots on the twenty-two acres. If we take any amount, we would be taking one buildable lot.
Right. That's what I wanted to get to. So the twenty-two acres now becomes a one-site parcel, whereas now there's possible two-site parcel if someone bought the whole twenty-two, correct?
Correct. But they would be compensated for what we are taking probably.
They would be compensated, I understand they'd be compensated, but I'm just trying to get to the logistical part of what we're trying to do and what harm, if any, there is. Go ahead. All right.
Correct. Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I will make a motion that, I'm looking for the language, to adopt the resolution that allows, that authorizes staff to go through, I'm looking for the...
Reason on the bottom.
Well, I thought I saw something in here, I lost it. I make a motion, we consider the adoption of the resolution authorizing the acquisition of public, for public purpose by purchase or condemnation of real estate property owned by Jennifer L. McAllister and Matthew Laken or their successors and assigned having tax on tax map seventy-four A one fourteen.
There is a motion on the floor for the adoption of a resolution authorizing the acquisition of public, for public purposes by purchase or condemnation of real estate owned by Jennifer McAllister and Matthew Laken or their successor and assigned, and that's tax, tax map number seventy-four dash A dash one fourteen. Is there a second?
I'll second.
So there is the motion and a proper second. Any further discussion?
I just want a clarification.
Yes, sir, Mr.?
I saw, these proceedings don't preclude the owner from selling the property, correct? I mean, they have the right to sell their property, and someone has the right to purchase So there's no, there's no, I think that, I think that's part of the...
Is that correct?
I would refer to Mr. Emerson, but I don't believe that that restricts the owner from selling it to the contractor.
Mr. Emerson, are you with us?
Yes.
Can you answer that question for Mr. Forehand, please?
Yes, that's correct. They can sell the property, and you wouldn't, you wouldn't be negotiating, depending on when the sale closes, you would be negotiating for the purchase of the property with whoever the current owner is at the time. It could be the owners before the closing or the new owner after the closing. And then if, if the negotiations don't, don't result in a, in a, in a successful contract for the county to purchase the property, you could then take it by eminent domain after going through a number of other legal hoops, and that would, that would apply regardless of who owns the property.
Does that answer your question?
Yes, I was, I was under the impression that was the case. I just wanted to make sure that was, that there, we're not impeding the current owner's ability to sell.
Right.
Or the contract holder's ability to buy.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Forehand. Mr. Thomas?
Yep. Based on Mr. Forehand's question, which is a good question, we're negotiating with the actual owner and not the contract buyer, right, Mr. Emerson?
Yes, sir.
But I guess as a contract buyer, the owner could stipulate that the, well, the owner could stipulate the contract buyer could negotiate for him.
I have, I have not seen whatever their contract is. We had made, the county had made an offer to purchase, which was verbally, orally accepted, is my understanding, before the contract was entered into. And instead of coming back to the county and saying, "We have another contract, would you offer more money?" Or perhaps they did that, I don't know actually, but we had a limit from the board as to what could be offered, and we could not offer... And we could not offer more money than, uh, that amount at the time. And so.
Okay.
They entered into a contract with another purchaser.
Okay.
For slightly more than what the board had approved, uh, as an offer, which was actually what their real estate agent had told us they wanted to sell the property for.
Okay.
Um, so, so my point is, is that, you know, until that closes, we're still dealing with them. Most real estate contracts will have provisions in them for what happens if eminent domain is instituted in the middle of, of a, of, of, of that process of purchase.
Thank you, Mr. Emerson. So there is a motion and a second on the floor regarding the resolution. All in favor say, any more discussion first of all? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it, the resolution is adopted, is passed.
Chair, do you mind taking one, five minutes? Yeah.
We will call the meeting back to order.
Oh.
All right. Next on the agenda, under unfinished business is item number seven. Uh, continued discussion of the 2019, 20 school reversion funds. In your packet, I believe you have a listing of, um, the amount of money that we're talking about, and it's, uh, 1,007, I'll give it to you, just a second. 1,007, 184,912 dollars and 70 cents. Board discussion, board comment? Board more clarification?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I guess I'll go first, and I know this will be, this will be, um, there'll be, I'm sure some pretty heavy discussion about this. So it's my understanding, if I'm doing the math correctly, Mr. Cully, there was roughly about $3 million in reversion money, is that correct? Yes, yes, it's right here, so I, I would say roughly around 3 million. Okay.
And we've given a million three, though.
We've given 1.2.
1.3.
1.281.
I've got 1.281.
We, we, um.
1.8. 1.8. Yeah, 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 yeah. Softball field. Right.
If we, we aren't a money, we don't know.
So, yeah, do we? Yeah, yeah, no, I'll just, I'm just gonna chime in, then we can have a discussion about it. Um, I don't know what the cost of the softball facility was. Mr. White, and I just saw him, what the cost? We're not finished, okay. Okay, so anyway, we're, we're covering, we're obviously, we're covering that. Okay, so that would leave, I mean, some of these things, uh, CHS stadium lights, 250,000, stadium bleachers, 119,000, large-scale roofing repairs, 350,000, technology, 170,000. Those were some of the big things, a dump truck for 75,000. Yeah, I'm, I'm just.
These are already approved.
I know, this is one we've already given.
Yes.
I'm just.
What you're reading, I'm just gonna go through all of them.
I'm just going over what we've already given.
Got you. So you're gonna, you're gonna.
I'm just, I'm just going over what we've already, so there's 1.2, and that does not include, the county agreed to, um, the county agreed to, uh, fix the softball field at the high school for the issues ahead with drainage, um, and some other, other, um, issues as well. So Mr. Whiteman is taking care of that. So the schools are asking for the full remaining 1.784. The concern, I like to try to come somewhere down the middle. And the county also has expenses. Um, we received a baddy grant. And there's state money and, um, federal money that's put into that, I believe, right, Mr. Thomas, or, um, it's, uh, the baddy grant is federal, Mr. Thomas?
Baddy grant is state.
State, state money, and then we have to match it. Um, and that is for, um, that is for broadband. So, um, any chance we get to expand broadband in the county is actually a benefit to students as well, um, because we need to, we have huge swaths. So that's not part of the budget, um, because we didn't know we were gonna get that. Another issue, um, that we have that's facing that's not part of this budget, my understanding is, well, we, we voted on it. Um, with early voting now, the registrar's office that we have has become too small. And we need to expand the registrar's office, so that in total, Mr. Cully, is another, another 400,000, 500,000?
400, but you might want to leave some contingency, but yet we hope to bring it in 400.
So we're saying, yes.
We haven't been able to bid that out yet.
I'm just doing some rough math here, so we're, we've got 600,000 for, um, to expand the internet by 650 homes, is that my understanding, or roughly, uh, roughly in the area?
600, more than that, 650, something like that.
650, 600, 650 homes, um, that we would never get without the grant. Um, so then the registrar's office, because of early voting.
Internet.
And then finally, um, we have, are obligated to, um, help with that traffic light on, um, Route 639 for the sheets coming in. So those are all kind of unbudgeted items that, that the county does need. Um, so my proposal is, and this may be, um, obviously going to receive some discussion, but as a compromise, um, I feel like we have given the schools, um, a big chunk of the money. And, and I do agree with Mr. Underwood, it is taxpayer money. Uh, but I, as a compromise, what I would suggest is we take the 1.7 million that's remaining, but we agree to build the multipurpose facility ourselves, like we're doing the softball field, not to exceed a cost of 300,000. So, um, the turf field that, that, that can bring, that's a, that's a huge expense, and I, and I understand why there's a desire to have that. Um, but at the same time, we, right now, have already, I think, if we do the facility, multipurpose facility for the wrestling and the gymnastics, um, that would end up giving the schools over 1.5 of that million. So the, the schools would basically get half of the money. And then the county would get half of the money. And I, I really think when we start talking about expanding internet to people, um, that it's being used for in the county, a big chunk of that, or to expand a registrar's office that we kind of have to because of the early voting now, um, I, I think that people on the other side can understand why we need to do that. So that's kind of my proposed compromise. So I'll, that's, that's how I feel about it.
Thank you, Mr. Black. Uh, any other board comments regarding the 1.784912 reversion plan?
Well, I think I'd also like to state, if I'm not mistaken, is after the school budget last year was approved, that we added additional, when there was that great time between the COVID funds coming in and nobody knowing what they, things were gonna do, we did, uh, gave additional 1.3 million to the schools to help tie them over. Um, so we were trying to help them.
COVID money.
COVID money, yeah. Um, to help them, help out there. Uh, we used, went through all of ours, so I sort of feel like these other things are needed too, especially the internet, and we're already looking at a big tax rate. I cannot stop, help and stop the fake. We already have so many children that come to school, and I keep hearing people worried about food, you know, deserts and, and children being hungry. Yeah, how much are we gonna push taking another quart of milk off the table? Because we have postponed doing taxes last year because of COVID. Um, and we need that internet put in, and the sooner we pay our share, the sooner they're gonna start working. So I have no problem with, with taking the, some of the, uh, funds that went back into our account for the, uh, for the internet, none at all.
All right, Mrs. Long, Mr. Forehand, you have comments?
I actually like, uh, Mr. Black's proposal.
Okay.
Not actually, I, I like Mr. Black's proposal.
Okay.
Trying to.
Mr. Thomas?
Mine is totally different. Um, and that, as I've said before, we have to make a choice between sometimes facilities and, and people. And I know it appears to be one-time money, that just like the insurance saving is one-time money. But I, I'd like to see some go for teacher raises, and, and that's another story, so. Instead of doing a facility or something, give some of that money back to them for teacher raises, if that's possible.
It's one-time money, so we're, we're gonna be, whatever we spend now, we gotta come up with next year, and we're already, so we can't do that, Mr. Thomas.
Well, we can do that.
We can do that, but we're gonna have to find a way to, to balance it again next year.
Right, and, and that's, that's in reality what's gonna happen regardless of what we do, because the insurance saving money will more than likely be used for step increase and not operation. So what, that's money we'll have to do again next year.
Again, Mr., for me, Mr. Thomas.
I'm, I'm, I'm just saying, you, you asked for my opinion, I'm just trying to share.
Absolutely.
Share, share my opinion, and once I do, you can say, you know, you like it or you don't like it.
Right, it's, it's up to the board.
That's exactly, that's exactly what I, I would do as opposed to any facility. So that's, that's where I am.
Mr. Sealy.
In the last two years, we've gone back 1 point, 2.6 million in the general fund in, in budgeting. We have, we haven't chewed through as much as we've budgeted for, because we, we actually budgeted for 2.5 million to come out of the general fund in '20. We only came out, we only came out with 1.7. The year before that, we went into the general fund 900,000. We're heading in a wrong direction, and our bond council made it very clear last night that we're under review. Losing a bond rating is the worst thing that could happen to us with interest rates starting to move in the other direction. And the rates that we got last night, I mean, 1.5% money for projects that we're doing, and we're doing projects that, and, and 2% money for, for utilities that we've got to do, we don't have a choice. I mean, Clay and Jeff, you both, both heard what's going on at South River, what's going on at Pendleton, what's going on at Lady Smith Village. I, I mean, we don't have a choice, and that's 11, 11 to 13 million dollars. And we're, and we're, we've jet, we've, we've taken, we balanced the budget on the general fund, the fund balance, and we're now 2.6 backwards in that. So at some point, we have to say, what are we gonna do? We've already looked at, we've looked at this year's budget. What was presented tonight is 2.5 million dollars in additional spending. And that gives schools money, it gives fire and rescue money, it gives the sheriff's office money. And then to be fair, we've given everybody that's not affected, remember the three for two. For every 3% we get from the state, we've got to match two. That's for schools, that's for the sheriff's office, that's for the constitutional officers. That's a huge mandate by the state that we weren't counting on when we started talking about budget early in the year before the general assembly was done. When we look at the numbers and we look at where we're going, and what, we all had this discussion last night. We're looking at an eight-cent tax increase on a general fund budget that we've already chewed into, 2.6 million dollars. I, I mean, the day of reckoning is, is here, and we, and we've, we've done the borrowing. We don't have a choice in the stuff that we've borrowed. I mean, the Bowling Green Fire Truck Chief, if I'm not correct, is out of service completely now. And it's not fixable. So it's not like, I mean, you can fix it, money will fix anything. You could jack up the radiator cap and put a new truck underneath it, and you fixed it. But we are now in a situation where we have got to put money back according to the, I'm going, I'm going back to the bond council, sat next to Floyd and Reggie last night and told them, you know, whispering over their shoulders that we can't continue this. And we all looked at eight, eight cents last night is what it's gonna take to actually write the budget and stay out. And we're still gonna be in the fund balance if everything doesn't, if everything, if, if everything doesn't go perfect, we're gonna be back in the fund balance for 725,000 dollars. So even with an eight-cent tax increase, we're not gonna, we're not gonna stay out of the fund balance. So anything we don't put back is gonna be a hindrance to us in the next budget cycle, and there's no way around it. And we won't have any way to repair that then, unless you're gonna start making cuts mid-year, which I, I can tell you, Mr. Thomas and I have been part of that, it was not pretty. We sat and agonized over employees and what else we could cut out. It wasn't a fun time. I, I did not relish it, and I'm not saying we're not, that we can't afford, but what we can't afford to do is to leave the general fund in the, in the shape that it's in today and expect to go to that well for another 725,000 dollars. If we, if we, if we, if we keep the promises that we did tonight in the county administrator's fiscal 2122 budget. And we haven't even, when we haven't adopted a tax rate, we're not gonna talk about the tax rate till next week, but it all hinges on that. We all know it, we've all been through this drill before, there's nobody up here that hasn't been through four, five, six budgets. But what I'm saying is the general fund is in trouble, and the bond council told us that.
Mr. Cully.
So, wait, I think it's my turn.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Sealy. When we started out looking at the reversion funds, uh, um, agreed with the numbers up to 2019. And I was okay with, with funds and working with those funds. I agree that 2020 was not a normal expenditure year. Nor was it a normal year in terms of operation. I think we, the, the board did their due diligence, and we took rever, took, uh, Cares' money, and we did share it with the schools to make sure that they had, and were able to put together a plan to, ensure that schools continue to operate. And I've said, and I'll say it again, I'm not going to banter about what schools do with their money any longer. We're either going to give them the money, get out of the way. I'm not gonna tell them they need to build a wrestling facility. I'm not gonna tell them they need to do X, Y, or Z. But I'm gonna say, we're gonna give you the money. And again, I said, I'm saying, get out of the way. I do not believe this is traditional reversion funds. If I believed that, I would have taken the same approach for FY18, FY17, FY19. I think, Mr. Cully, you went back and found money from FY14. Was it 14, Mr. Cully? That you, in that sheet you had, there was money, after you did the audit, there was 435,000 left over, someone, that we included in that? It, I mean, I'm just saying, that was, what the audit showed, I'm, I'm saying, that's what the audit showed. And I said, absolutely, that 1.2 million should go to schools, because that was what we agreed to. But extraordinary circumstances, sometimes you have to make the adjustment, and I believe this is the adjustment time. I think we were fair, I believe we were fair with those funds because they belong back to school. But I do not, in my heart, believe that the 1.7 should go back to school, to go back to the general fund. And we continue to try to build this, um, go back to, build the general fund. I remember when I came to the board, and, Mr. Cully, we were borrowing money to make it through. We are on the verge right now. You think it's bad now, give it another year, and you're gonna be cutting people's budgets. Yep, we have homes coming, we have 639 coming, we've spent 6 million dollars, which is a good investment, but we haven't gotten a return yet. We've spent $6 million, which is a good investment, but we haven't gotten a return yet. It's coming. Does it mean that people don't deserve? Absolutely not. It means that you cannot afford it. And to sit here and prophylacticize that you can, it does not make sense to me. When you heard the same presentation I heard last night, and you're going back to where you were 10 years ago. And it's not going to be a very pretty sight next year, I can promise you, if you do this. So I'm asking this board to consider bringing that reversion fund back to the general fund. So that we don't have to dig into this fund to, uh, supply this, to put the money into our 22 budget. And we can start building the general fund again. That's my comment. Mr. Black, your comment.
Mr. Colley, I ask you a question. So I'm seeing here, cause I asked for this information from Mr. Parton today, I'm seeing here that the remaining funds. That we haven't allocated or haven't been allocated is 1.784. That would go back into the general fund, right?
Correct.
Or maybe, might be sitting already in the general fund.
It's already there.
It's already there. Okay. So if we did, how much of a, cause I did hear them last night. I did hear the bond council last night. And they don't want us dipping into, we've dipped into the, you know, fund balance two years. We have a major tax hike coming. Um, an eight cent tax hike, which, um, you know, I appreciate the schools wanting a, a bunch of facilities. I understand that. But we also have people that aren't on very, um, you know, some people that are elderly that don't have a lot of income. So we have to take that into consideration too. But I'm wondering if we took so roughly around 1.8 million, 1.784, so we can just round up to 1.8. If we took the 300,000 and then, or gave 300,000, we built a wrestling facility for them and not to exceed 300,000. Would that put us in a, um, would that cripple us financially in any way, shape, or form? How much of, I guess.
That's not a fair question. You're asking, is it gonna cripple? It's not the right word.
Well, would that put us in financial dire straits?
No, I think if we have that money that you just mentioned to be able to offset the, the batty grant. And the stoplight and the registrar's office definitely helps us. But that's not coming just directly out of the fund balance unbudgeted. It's one thing when you budget money out of the fund balance, but when you have those big expenditures come out and then that's a, you know, suddenly a million, million four that's coming out. So I think that, that, that coming back is certainly helpful. Whether, I, I think whether you have the county build a facility or not, a small, that, that's a small amount. I don't know that that's significant if you can do those other things with the remaining money that's not returned.
Okay.
So I, I don't, I don't see it as dire.
It's not the point of no return.
Yeah. No, no, I wouldn't think that would be dire. No.
Okay.
But it'd be better if it was in the fund balance. Yes. You just have to decide whether that's a facility that needs to be built at this time as six of you.
Right. Oh, thank you. So it would be 300,000, not to exceed. And then that would, that would be 1.48, 1,484,000 returning to the fund balance. Or going, basically going to pay for the 1.34. Okay.
Do we have a price from Mr. Wrightman, uh, White man on the, uh, softball field? Cause I know there was a drainage issue. Do we know how much that went, made it go up?
We discussed the softball field since we agreed to do the softball field. Right now he spent 75,000 with the drainage and he's getting bids on the dugouts and those types of things. So I think there was something else that he needed to do. So I, I believe he's right now up to about 140, 140,000 that he knows he's gonna spend right now. For that softball field. I believe, that's what I, I, as I talked to him, uh, a couple of days ago. And, and that's as far as, again, school money is concerned, since I agreed to that before. Right. We're. After that, all, all I wanna, again, all I wanna do is get to the number that we're going to give, if any. And either. Cause I don't believe it is reversion fund. I don't think we should treat it as a version fund, but whatever the board, four members of this board consent to, agree to. We don't have a choice. Cause that's how the voting goes. Whoever can get the four votes, that's how they go. I just know that. You're going to, you, Mr. Colley, talk about a day of reckoning. You're not there yet. But, Mr. Colley, you know, it's right around the corner. It's, I mean, not right, it's right around the corner. And we're gonna be here next year. You're gonna ask for a tax increase because I'm not for an eight cent tax increase. The budget is built on an eight cent tax increase. This budget here, that only gets you through next year. We had some additional debt service in 22 and 24 of 519,000, I believe. Is that correct, Mr. Colley? Yesterday, Mr. Additional debt service. Is that right, Ms. Smith? You've got that coming next year also. So you can bite it now. We can sit here and we can say, oh. I want what's best. For schools, for sheriff. If we had money sitting in the bank to spend, it would be a no-brainer. But it's, but all you have to do is look at the numbers to see. The light coming down the track, there's not a man walking with a flashlight. That's the train that's coming. And I'll tell you again, that when you get to 2023 budget and you have to cut. I'm gonna say that I told you so. And you cannot ride the back of taxpayers year after year after year. We're trying to grow industry on 639. That's why we invested 26 million dollars there. Six of it was money out of the general fund to grow that area so we would have money. Once that produces money, sure, we can give additional fund. But honestly, gentlemen and lady, it's just not there right now.
And Mr. Underwood, if I could, the other thing that I, I just thought of, of is that. That money is there, we'll have it if it's in our general fund, but we still, we can spend it. When we need to and what we need to, but we have a, a black hole because we have no idea what the cares funds regulations are gonna be. If it's going to help us and in what area it's gonna help us. So we can make some of these decisions down the road once all that is, is known. As far as doing additional things to help either with the structures or improvements or something of that type. That's, that is an unknown right now. So perhaps we should be conservative. And take, take it and hold it until we know what is gonna happen and then decide how we're gonna divide it up.
To me, Mr. Chairman, we, we can't speak out of both ends of our mouth here. We, we talk about the train track coming down pipe and, but we all voted for, we all agreed to the 30 million dollars that we had to borrow. We all agreed, we all agreed that we had to do the sewer pipes. Otherwise, the subdivisions in the western part of the county are, can't build anymore. We all agreed to that. I don't think we, we all agreed that we need to spend 600,000 dollars on the batty grant. We agreed to that as a board unanimously. I think that was a unanimous vote. I mean, we, we, we've agreed to these expenses. We've agreed that we need two fire stations. So we can't say here tonight that the train is coming and then say, well, I don't agree with the eight cents. We voted for it. We voted for the expenses and then we're gonna say, then we're gonna say the train track's coming down the track.
Wait a minute, Mr. Black. We didn't vote for eight cents yet.
No, we voted for it. We voted for the projects that are, Mr. Colley put in his budget.
No, wait a minute.
That's gonna cost us eight cents.
No, wait a minute. The proposed tax rate, tax increase is eight cents.
Right.
We have not adopted a tax rate.
I didn't.
Mr. Colley's responsibility is to build a tax, to build a budget.
And.
For the county and, and Mr. Colley feels that based on his expertise. He built the best budget and he is telling us what he needs in order to fund that budget. Am I correct, Mr. Colley? Mr. Colley does not set the tax rate. He only advises us.
Be, right. But he made a proposal that we, based on the projects that we agreed to. He made a proposal and his proposal on the projects that we agreed to and the, and the, the budget that he's proposing. But while we're saying, hey, we like the, the sheriff's pay scale or the 5%. So we're saying the train track is coming, but we've agreed to a lot of these things, especially these capital projects we've already agreed to. And, and so now we're saying we're not gonna, but, but I mean, the point is, the point is this, the other, the other point.
Yeah, it's not the same. Let me, let me help you, Mr. Black.
No, no, I don't need help, Mr. Underwood. No, I don't. I don't need help.
Because you're mixing apples and oranges.
No, I'm not really mixing apples and oranges. We've been through this last night. We, we want, 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 I want a fire station, but I don't wanna pay for it.
No, nobody said not to pay for it. Nobody said not to pay for it.
And it's two fire stations. You're right. Instead of one, it's two.
Right. And no one said not to pay for it. No one says that. We are not going, we have to pay for it because we put it in to the C I P.
And you're right.
Last night, 30 million dollars. If, if we did what we did with Caroline Fine, I can take Western Caroline and say, let's vote and make you a, a sanitary district. You can pay the 30 million dollars and raise the rates again, if that's how you look at it.
What are you talking?
I'm just saying, we did it with Caroline Fine. So I'm just saying, in order to be.
I don't even have sewer in my district. We don't even have sewer in Western Carolina. It's aqua. So we don't, we don't even have it. We don't even have it.
So I'm just saying, this benefits, you have 300 houses being built in the county right now. Our sewer system is at 95%.
Right.
Usage is the, is going to help.
Sure.
So, so.
So we agree to that project.
Infrastructure, Mr. Mr. Black, infrastructure cost is gonna come before the profit. It's gonna come. You go through, have a choice.
I don't agree.
That's why, that's why you put one at 639, correct?
I agree with you, but if you vote for a project, you've gotta pay for a project.
We're, we're gonna pay. I'm, that's why I'm not voting for this project.
But we're still 725,000 dollars into the general fund with, well, even if we vote for eight cents, if that's the tax rate, we're still 725,000 dollars into the unencumbered balance. So no matter how you slice and dice this, we're back 2.9 now. You can't take another 725,000 out of it. And you can't nickel and dime it down the road trying to figure out.
Do we, and I'm just being, do we think like, for example, anything that we build now, we did the infrastructure now, we'd agree to do like the, the sewer project. There was two different projects, right? And we agreed to do them both now because it'd be cheaper to do them both now than down the road, correct? Let's split them one-on-one. So anything that we're talking about now, do we think for a minute that if we don't do this, the schools are gonna be like, yeah, you know what? We don't need a wrestling facility next year. We don't need a wrestling facility. But you, you're right, we don't need it. Do you think, so next year when they come back to us, do you think that wrestling facility is gonna get cheaper? Do you think, do you think that the infrastructure is gonna get any cheaper as we go down the road? I'm just asking you because it's not.
Mr. Black.
So it's, it's cheaper to do it now when we have, when there's, there's money here that can be used more because when they, when they come to us next year, the year after, it's gonna be more expensive.
Mr. Black.
Okay. I mean, we can just vote on it and then we can just lay the chip.
I have a, I have a question for Mr. Colley.
Go ahead, Mr. Mr.
Mr. Colley, the, the 1.7, that's, that's not in our unencumbered balance that we're looking at right now, correct?
It is not. It's in the school fund balance.
So if we were to put 1.4.
It would come back.
Into that, that number goes up by 1.4 million dollars.
Correct. But, but I've showed you, you've got expenditures that are coming back out against that.
We have unbudgeted expenditures of 1.3 or 100.
Right.
And by the time you had the softball, it, it's, it's basically a wash.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we take the 1.784912.70 and remand that back to the general fund.
There is a motion on the floor by Mr. Sealy that we take the 1.784912.70 and put it back in the general fund. Is there a second?
Second.
A second by Mrs. Long. Any further discussion?
Can I have, can I have one last, last discussion?
Yes, sir.
Um, it's, it's. It's, it's fairly germane to, to the motion. But can, can we give some, some incentive that if there are reversion funds this year in the 21 budget? That, that we would immediately look at those projects again? You know, and, and we may be able to look at them a little sooner with COVID money that comes for both of us. Just the board, just the board not saying this is the end of the, the deal. Just says that if there's money in the 21 budget. Which we probably will have an idea in July or so, we could possibly look at those again. That's just a, you know, yes, we can look at them again is all I'm asking for.
That, that's a, again, I, from, from, from my perspective again. I'm gonna deal with the reversion fund from 20. And I understand I'm not going to.
I will.
Bargain, but I understand what you're saying.
I will wait and, and carry this motion and then I will ask that question in the form of a motion.
Thank you, Mr. Thomas. There's a motion and a proper second regarding the, uh, FY 19 reversion fund. FY 20, excuse me, reversion fund of 1,784,912.70. All those in favor?
Hold on, Mr. 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 Chairman.
You're in the question.
I'm, 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 I'll, 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 you.
Can we, Mr. Thomas, you're the Roberts Rules guy. Does secondary motion take priority?
What's the secondary motion?
No, no.
What's the secondary motion?
No, I mean, I'm saying if you do a secondary motion, does it take priority?
If you make a motion in addition to his motion, we vote on your motion first.
Okay. So I will make the motion that we do take the 1.784 million. And we, um, build the wrestling slash multipurpose facility not to exceed 300,000.
Wait, wait, you're saying.
He can't make that motion.
Yeah, that's not really a secondary motion.
That's not a secondary. No, you can't make a motion by Rob's.
Your, your, your motion has to directly affect.
Effective this motion. So again, there is a proper motion and a proper second. Go back into the general fund from the ninth, the 2020 reversion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose?
Nay.
I heard the vision in the house. I'll do a roll call. Mr. Forehand.
Nay.
Mr. Forehand votes nay. Mr. Black.
Mr. Black votes nay.
Mr. Black votes nay. Mr. Sealy.
I vote aye.
Mr. Sealy votes aye. Ms. Long.
Aye.
Ms. Long votes aye. Mr. Thomas.
I said I wanted to vote to give some of this money back to teachers. If you're not gonna do that, I'll vote aye.
Mr. Thomas votes aye and I vote aye. The motion carries to return the money back to the general fund. From the FY 20 reversion.
Mr. Chairman, could I make a, uh?
No.
Could I make another discussion motion? And, and my point was to, as quickly as possible, look at the possible projects and/or bonuses for teachers at the end of the year. If there are funds available with our discussions with the school at the end of the year, unspent. That we immediately look at these again as soon as possible.
If schools have money and they wish to have a conversation. I will ask this board to listen. But I'm not going to give any directive.
All I said was listen, discuss it.
Yeah.
We'll discuss it as soon, as soon as possible without a, you know, delay. And that, that may be whatever the board decides to use those funds for.
I think that's, I don't have an issue with that, Mr. Thomas.
And it may be, it may be sooner if.
And it may be sooner as Mrs. Long is gonna second, because it may be sooner if, if our COVID money is usable and those sort of things.
So there's a motion by Mr. Thomas to continue to look at, uh, reversion money for this year, uh, the twenty-one. He made a motion, didn't he?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And so I need a second. Then proper second by Mrs. Long. Any discussion?
I would just like you to restate what it is, please.
The statement is that, um, at the end of the, well, as soon as possible, based on
As quickly as possible, right.
knowing where money is and where money isn't, if there's, there possibly be a discussion as to giving additional monies, uh, to schools if that money is available. Is that right, Mr. Thomas?
Yeah, normally we wait, I think, Mr. Cully, until October when the audit's done. But we should have a better understanding by July, based on, on the bills Mr. Kearns paid and, and what the schools tell us, a general idea of where they are.
We've never, we've never been in five years anywhere close to July.
No, well, they, they know at the end of the year how, how much money they spent.
Well, again, I'm not, I got to, I'm not getting into their money. I'm just not doing.
Why do we, Mr. Chairman, why do we need a motion to possibly consider a future budget problem or issue? Why is there?
Because Mr. Thomas has the right, as a board member, to make a motion.
I, I understand that, but.
We don't, we don't necessarily need a motion, Mr. Black, but we need to, we need to reinforce the fact that there is a policy that we're gonna make sure we, um, do something about quickly in this instance. We don't, we don't know what, what are the effects of COVID on this year's budget based on what they were on last year's budget? Is there seven, eight, nine hundred thousand dollars that's not spent? That may be what they need for facility. That's all I'm saying. We need to, you know, we need to make sure we're gonna work together as quickly as possible, which was the thing.
And I, I agree with Mr. Black. I didn't think we needed a motion, but, uh, do whatever chair says we need to do or, or parliamentarian thinks we need to do.
The proper motion and a proper second.
We call a question, so. If there's no other discussion.
All, if there's no other, uh, discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Um, then we will look at the, thank you, Mr. Thomas. Next on the agenda, item number eleven is request to schedule public hearing on BDOT six-year secondary road, uh, plan.
The answer is yes.
Mr. Fincham.
Do you need a motion, Mr. Fincham?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I would suggest that we discuss this item on a new business at your next regularly scheduled meeting and have the public hearing at your second May meeting. May twen, May twelfth?
Hold on, let me put that here.
Regular media.
They left a sample.
Yeah.
Those are the special meetings. One was mainly just for the, um, the tax rate and that's meeting starting at seven thirty, so there's no six o'clock part to that meeting because it's next week, correct? And the twenty-seventh, you had asked and the boards gotta agree to recess out of the meeting on the twentieth to the twenty-seventh for a budget, like a budget discussion. And so our next regular scheduled meeting is May.
Yeah, I was just, just gonna suggest that, that you discuss the six-year plan at your May eleventh meeting. I can get with you beforehand if, if any board member has any specific projects that you would like to discuss in your district. And then I can share those with BDOT and we actually had the public hearing at your May twenty-fifth meeting.
Sure, Mr. Fincham.
Yes, sir.
Um, we, Mr. Sealy and I had a, uh, a very good discussion with GWRC.
Oh, Michael's.
Yeah, right. And, yeah, you were there. Yeah, you were there, so.
I just listened.
No, but I mean, seriously, it would be nice to, uh, be able to get them into some of this stuff too, because they can, that's their job is to work for us. So if we could, on some of this discussion, to make sure that GWRC is here for us.
Yes, sir.
Um, because I think that having them, they, they really excited because they have new leadership now and they seem to be, um, that meeting the other day, I, I, the first time that I know that they've actually met with us and started, um, talking about, you know, what some of the rural road issues are. And in all the years I've been on it, and I've been on it since two thousand twelve, and, and we, Mr. Sealy and I talked about, like, there's other supervisors that would want to have some insights to different areas of the county where the roads need to be improved. So if we could get them in on the discussion too, I, I, I think that'd be very beneficial to us.
I'll see if they're available for the eleventh.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Isn't, but, Mr. Chairman, BDOT's having a, BDOT's having a virtual public hearing, April twenty-seventh. Does that affect us?
No, that's, that's related to.
The Commonwealth Transportation Board?
Yeah. Which is sep, that's sep, this sex, the six-year secondary road plan is a separate category, not subject to the public hearing on the twenty-seventh.
Well, this says that conduct a, a, a series of virtual public meetings to give citizens the opportunity to provide projects and programs to be included in the fiscal year twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-seven, six-year improvement program.
That, that's the primary in urban.
And the fiscal year secondary improvement program?
Yeah, we, we were advised that we didn't have to have the public hearing until May. So we, we can certainly, if, if you want to, um, you know, every year they offer us the opportunity to, to meet with the CTV.
Okay. Well, I just, I wanted to make sure we don't miss an opportunity by having ours in May and they have theirs in April.
Yeah, because we actually have to adopt a six-year secondary road program, so our adoption should not be affected by that and vice versa.
But do you want this, um, notification or do you have it?
I, I have it.
Alright.
Mr. Fincham, uh, have you tried to download the information that came with that email? Cause my computer don't wanna download it.
Uh, I can download it and get it for you.
Alright, thank you. If it's five hundred pages, don't copy it. I just email it to you. I'll see if my computer are taking from you.
Thank you, Mr. Thank you, Mr. Fincham. I have one other, um, thing I'd like to discuss real quick. Did all of the board members receive the CPS point of clarification? At last night's meeting, I said that the schools had seven hundred, uh, positions, but I should be corrected that there's seven hundred positions, but six hundred and thirty-nine point six five FTE. So full-time equivalent. So I think, uh, well, I don't think, I'm, I said last night that whatever it was, six thirty-three or seven hundred. But Dr. Calverick, I want to thank you. It's clear. Appreciate it. And I have it. Cully. Informational items, Mr. Cully?
We've included an update for your status of capital projects. I will not bore you with more numbers. I've talked about too many numbers tonight as it is. We do have, uh, we've advertised, but I would recess out of this meeting to seven thirty here in the auditorium on the twentieth. And then, um, Mr. Underwood has asked that we meet again on the twenty-seventh. I would assume that would be at six o'clock. Um, and that probably would be in the EOC if we're gonna do a lot of budget work, but it doesn't have to be. You can decide next week where you want to meet on that. We did include an update from the chief on all of the repairs and, uh, what we've done down at Sparta. And so I think that's it. Our, we've already discussed, our next regular board meeting is six P M. on the eleventh of May. Um, and it's still COVID time, so there's really nothing else on your calendar of any meetings or any of that type of stuff, because everything's still pretty much canceled.
So Mr. Cully, clarification, the twentieth is our tax rate.
Correct, tax rate.
And then tax rate, correct. Then the twenty-seventh is budget, correct? So it's very important, what's that? Bu- budget adoption. So it's critical that we take a look at the numbers, take a look at the requested eight percent tax increase. Eight cent tax increase, was it? Eight cent tax increase, um, before that, that meeting. Thank you, Mr. Cully.
We can, we can adopt the tax rate the twentieth.
I would encourage you to adopt the tax rate on the twentieth to give chance for the commissioner of revenue and the treasurer, they need about a week between them and the billing company to mail the bills out. So that way they'll be out before May first and they're due June fifth.
You sure, Mr. Emerson said it was the budget that had to wait seven days and not the tax rate?
Yeah, we double-checked that, triple-checked it. It's the budget for some reason that has that code section wait seven days.
So tax rate on the twentieth, budget adoption twenty-seventh.
We will double-check it again before Tuesday, but we have, but we will double-check it again before Tuesday.
Mr. Mr. Cully, are you gonna do the update on the repairs to the Sparta Fire Department or, uh, Chief Loftus? Oh, just, yeah, just give him opportunity.
I included pictures in your package.
Yes.
Uh, if you have any questions, I'll answer those. We, we haven't bloodproofed anything, but we have mitigated, uh, the results of the next flood. You know, that's inevitable at that location. So, uh, the next one in your memo should be much less costly than, than, than the past floods. Any question?
No, I don't think any.
I'll stand. Thank you.
Closing board comments, Mr. Forehand.
None, sir. Yeah, just want to remind people about the, um, Aqua Public Hearing, um, next Tuesday, so you have till Friday to sign up, um, online to speak. So I will be speaking and I hope that Mr. Chairman and some of the others will agree to as well. Um, so it's, all the information is there. And Mr. Cully and Mr. Pardon have the information. How to sign up, please. Thank you.
Mr. Sealy?
I have none, Mr. Chairman.
Mrs. Long? Mr. Thomas?
None. I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion, we recess to seven thirty on April twentieth, twenty twenty-one for a public hearing on the proposed twenty twenty-one tax rates.
Second.
All in favor, say, uh, uh, second, Black, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We are now, are any opposed? We're now recessed till April twentieth at seven thirty.